Good evening, welcome to the City Commission Work Session, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Would you call the order, please?
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Here.
Commissioner Opelt?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Minton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Get my act together. Um, we have three items on the agenda. Would you like to allow public comment for?
Yes, I would move that we allow public comment for each agenda item.
Second.
Second, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mr. Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, this is a work session. Comments are allowed. We limit two to three minutes per person, please. The first item on the agenda is Parking Services Division Parking Garages Update.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Have a couple items tonight to talk about. First of all, just want to give you a little overview of our Parking Services Division here tonight and just the work that they do on a day-to-day basis, and then dive into the two districts where that division is focused and working seven days a week related to downtown in Aggieville. Give you a little update on just where we're at with downtown and the parking garage that come in online, but also Aggieville, and, you know, we've been charging there for the last two years now, so to give you a little bit of update on the rates there, and we're looking for a little bit of feedback from you all tonight, one related to a potential agreement with HCW and the Hilton as it relates to reserve stalls in the downtown garage and that capital funding effort to make improvements there. But then also Aggieville rates and the requests that you were presented a few months ago related to that summer construction where Moro's going to be closing. The Parking Services Division wasn't created until two thousand twenty-two. Prior to that, we had a parking division of one most of the time, and that was Heath Romine, who's now our Parking Services Manager, and he enforced, I'm gonna let him talk a little bit about his past here and just what he did in the districts in Aggieville and downtown. But then the maintenance of lots in the downtown garage was really a collective effort from park staff as well as other divisions and departments, and we really didn't have any dedicated funding source towards those areas. Flash forward, when the Aggieville Garage was created and built in two thousand twenty-two, we did establish a Parking Services Division, and the primary mission of that division was to, you know, ensure that we are able to provide safe, secure, and clean parking facilities within those business districts. It's a small group right now of a little over five employees and really only one, you know, frontline customer service person who is available to take calls and answer questions of the public, which is why we have some limited public office hours. We're certainly in the districts and working, you know, the parking beat seven days a week, maintaining those facilities, but we maintain to be open to the public Monday through Thursday, one to five P. M., and on Fridays, eight A. M. to noon, so we can focus those other hours on efforts like processing permits and the day-to-day business of the garage. But I do want to bring Heath Romine up here. He's our Parking Services Manager. He just wanted to give you a little bit more insight of the Parking Services Division and the work he's been doing over the years.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to introduce myself. My name is Heath Romine. I am the new Parking Service Manager for the City of Manhattan. I've been with the City of Manhattan for twenty-three years. Twenty-two of those years have been with the Parking Department. To give you a little bit about our background, I began my career as a parking control officer for the municipal court with a chalk stick and handwritten tickets when everything was five dollars. So we've come a long way from there till now. In two thousand twenty-two, the Parking Division was established, and I was promoted Parking Services Supervisor. In that role, I helped develop the policies that we use in Parking Services. I was responsible for training all the new parking control officers on the LPR system. I would like to, excuse me, I would make sure that the officers knew and understood how the program works and what it does. I also trained them on the rules, regulations for the city and the various areas that we patrol. We train also in customer service. It is important that if we have customers and they have any questions or concerns, we take care of that as soon as we could possibly can. Just recently, I have the honor of being chosen to serve as the new Parking Service Manager. I lead a small but effective team that consists of two full-time parking officers. These officers patrol all the colored zones, garages, the Aggieville and downtown business districts. We have one part-time parking control officer who works evenings in the garage, so she works like three days out of the seven days, offering security, making sure everything runs smoothly in the evenings. Along with the officers, we have one senior admin assistant who helps with the office operations, the permit systems, assisting customers along with the general day-to-day. We have one maintenance worker who keeps our garages clean, power washes, paints lines, and maintains the facilities to the highest of standards. Our Parking Services would not run as efficiently as it does without the dedication of an amazing team that we have. Finally, it's been a pleasure to speak with you all this evening. It allowed me to introduce myself and share with you about my team, our department, and what we do for the city. If anybody has any questions or comments, our doors are always open. You can find our office just to the right of the entrance to the Aggieville Garage, or you can call me. We will answer any questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Heath. We certainly do have a, he said it best, a small but really effective team, a lot of work day-to-day, keeping these facilities in pristine condition, making sure that they are secure, safe areas, and then just being a good customer face to the community. A lot of questions, a lot of conversations that we have. Heath has established great relationships with the Aggieville and downtown business district directors as well as Riley County Police Department. All of that comes into play to making sure that these things operate smoothly. Want to dive in just to give you a little overview of the Parking Fund budget. It is a special revenue fund that's new to the city's overall budget over the last few years. Over time, the last couple of years and this year, we're continuing to hone in on what the exact expenditures are. There was a lot of, in the last, in the first two years, we had a lot of first-time purchases, a lot of things that came up just to make sure that everything was operating effectively primarily in our Aggieville Garage. The personnel line item there is what consists of those five and a half FTEs that Heath was describing, including himself, as well as we do fund a horticulture position out of the Parking Services budget because we do have one individual who's dedicated to maintaining that landscaping in the Aggieville and downtown districts. The contractual line item has ebbed and flowed over the years, but there's a lot of big pieces that go into that. Gas and electricity for our two garages is a huge line item. Elevator maintenance, I've been in front of you to talk about the elevators and how much those cost comes into play there as well. Just general building maintenance, you know, replacing bollards that have potentially been hit, replacing speed bumps as they need to be replaced. Ground maintenance, that line item is going to be up because that's what we charge for our snow removal, so we do manage that contract for a lot of the sidewalks and parking lots, as well as we always need to haul off and remove the snow from both of the roofs of our garages. So that line item is going to be up a little bit this year, as well as we do, within that contractual line item, have our software line item, which is primarily our IPS license plate recognition and permitting system. And then that commodity line item is really related to a lot of the operating maintenance supplies, as well as, that one was high last year because we purchased a lot of signs for the downtown garage last year when we were bringing that online. From a revenue standpoint, we're always trying to close that gap with cost recovery so that we don't have to, here at the bottom, rely heavily on that subsidy from the general fund. You all did approve an increase to the residential permit color zone last year, so that revenue did increase quite a bit. It used to be five bucks a year for one of those permits, and we increased that to fifteen. The parking fees line item there is, when you look at that from a two thousand twenty-four perspective, it's really the revenue that you generated in the Aggieville Garage, because that's really the only place we were truly charging throughout the year. So that, and I'll cover that slide a little bit later, but you have your hourly revenue, but then you also have the permits that we sell. And then there's also citation revenue. There's a projection over here for two thousand twenty-five. We did, in two thousand twenty-four, have a few more people in the division that we're not backfilling, keeping that team small, so we do hope to save a little bit on personnel. We do, over the first three months, are seeing the parking revenue from the Aggieville Garage year-over-year increase, so we do anticipate a little bit more there. And then citation revenue is not something that we really forecast or predict. I just threw up a number that's consistent over the last couple of years because really that's just dependent on what occurs. We did see a jump from twenty-three to twenty-four. We wrote over ten thousand warnings in two thousand twenty-three in the Aggieville Garage, and we wrote less warnings in two thousand twenty-four because we use a policy where individuals are always going to get a first warning on their first offense in the garage. So that behavior can change, which can always affect what that revenue line item looks like. Shifting gears, I just want to give you a little level set of where we're working in downtown, and then later we'll jump to Aggieville. But there's a picture of our beautiful four hundred and twenty stall parking garage that was built a little bit over ten years ago. In addition to that, you have six city parking lots that the Parking Services Division monitors. There's obviously a lot of parking lots in addition downtown when you throw in like the mall and the farmer's market parking lot, but those six lots are the ones, over six hundred stalls that we're monitoring. About a hundred of those are two-hour parking during the week. And then you have over seven hundred on-street stalls, and about half of those are two-hour during the week. We have invested a lot in the downtown garage in the past few years, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. Most recently, about two hundred thousand of that, two hundred and fifteen thousand was a modernization of the elevator in downtown, in that downtown garage. That was funded from transient guest access, you recall, so the other, you know, five hundred thousand or so did come from the general fund to make those improvements. Back in two thousand twenty-one, we did a substantial project related to replacing all of the lights within the downtown garage, as well as installing security cameras. These security cameras, this right here is a picture of the ability to have eyes on the garage throughout the week, even on evenings when we have, you know, our evening staff there at the Aggieville Garage, being able to see things that are going on in the downtown garage so we can react quickly in the event we see something occurring, contact Riley County Police Department, and then potentially catch whoever did something mischievous or damaging so that we can recoup those and the city doesn't lose out on some of those funds and when there's things like broken windows that need to be replaced or what have you. But we've done a lot of striping. We did a huge power washing and degreasing project. We hadn't done that in the downtown garage, but we did that in two thousand twenty-three, as well as some fencing installation. I mentioned the elevator modernization, and then a big piece that goes into that is the, you know, additional security cameras and signing, and then part of that investment, too, is the license plate recognition software that we, the city, did invest in so that we could start recouping some of that revenue. There are future investments that we need to make in the downtown garage, and some of you, this is probably the second or third time you've heard this. We did do that Walker Report back, and Walker Consultants, they're a parking consultant that we worked with with the Aggieville Garage, and we had them do an analysis of our downtown garage. It identified, you know, about eight hundred thousand dollars in improvements that we're trying to find, identify a funding source to make those improvements. If you look back at my earlier slide, our Parking Fund isn't generating a cash balance so that we can invest into some of these other things. So, you know, later I'm going to be talking about, you know, that reserved stall contract with HCW and the Hilton as a potential source, but realizing that we do need to chip away at this over the next five years and identify some funding sources. You can see here just some of the loose cladding, stone cladding that we've identified throughout that needs to be further analyzed and potentially remedied. And then just certain things like some of the precast concrete deterioration and sealant that needs to occur. We need to get in and address these sooner rather than later so that those, you know, cracks or issues don't expand, right? Just a little recap on the fee approach and the conversations that we've been having over the last year. Back this summer in May, the City Commission did approve a fee resolution that would have, that went into effect in August. We mirrored, similar to the fee rate that we had in Aggieville back in two thousand twenty-three, but it would have the first two hours free, two dollars an hour after that with a ten-dollar daily max. One thing that we did incorporate, too, is what we refer to as a group rate. So if there was a large conference or event happening in the district that wanted to utilize the garage, they could secure a five-dollar daily max rate. We had some discussions with you all and, you know, the CVB and the Hilton just about, you know, the urgency of shifting to a fee resolution that would go into place and conferences that were already booked are coming in, so there was a desire to, you know, kind of provide a compromise to offset that cost for the remainder of August two thousand twenty-four through the end of the year, and you all did pass a policy manual resolution that would have allowed the use of up to over a hundred thousand dollars in TGT funds through the end of the year. However, my third bullet here kind of goes into why we didn't really use any of that funds. We really only used about two thousand dollars of that early on when we were implementing the fee rate. There was just a handful of glitches with the Park Mobile system that made it difficult for us to really adequately ensure that everyone was having the same experience. What would happen was people would log into the Park Mobile app, they would pick their time, they would enter their promo code, and the promo code was either going to give you a five-dollar rate per day, or if we were utilizing maybe this TGT program, it was going to give you a zero-dollar rate per day. And that was what we were going to use to know how much we should use in TGT funds to offset that program there. However, when the code was entered and someone tried to go and check out, it would kick you right back to the beginning of the app. Very frustrating, very confusing. We, Heath and I, had a lot of conversations with Park Mobile to get that fixed as quickly as possible, and it took a lot longer than we think it should have, but it delayed the implementation, and we didn't want to, you know, tell, all right, conference guests, you guys are going to not pay public, but there's still signs over here that says you got to pay. So we eventually got to a point where it's like, okay, we're signing this place that it's free until we fix this. At the same time, HCW and the Hilton group who manage those conferences, they were kind of seeing the frustrations of, okay, even if things are working with the promo code and having people come in from out of town to use an app, it's still not the most efficient way, right? The most efficient way is for people to just come in and park. So we talked with HCW about, I think that's my next slide. I don't want to get too ahead of myself. But I will jump to that HCW part here in a little bit. Prior to pausing the fees, though, there was some good use of the garage, and we did actually start selling a lot of permits, too. Had a lot of part-time employees in the districts, over, actually thirty, that wanted to get part-time permits. We had a handful of reserved permits and some open stall permits. So that public use was still there, too. You know, at any given day, you could have over thirty people just from the public coming in that aren't associated with the hotel or the conference that were utilizing that garage. And then, of course, there's always other events going on that are public that where people would have been using that. Because we installed the license plate recognition cameras at our entries, we were at least able to track people coming in and out of the garage. I can't really give you, because we weren't using the promo codes at the time, a good breakdown of this percentage was using the garage for the conference versus this was a general member of the public. But overall, you had at least a hundred people, you know, on average, using the garage. I think this slide or this column right here is just really interesting because it was very up and down. You could have a day where you had four hundred people rushing in there to park for a conference, or you could have a random Tuesday with nothing going on and limited people parking in the garage. So it is good to know that there is a high usage that you can capitalize on a potential revenue source here soon. So we've been having these conversations with HCW. They're the owners of the Hilton, and we've been trying to identify how many stalls do they need? How can we make this easy for the conferencegoers so that it is seamless where they can just pull into the garage and park and go to their conference or stay at the hotel and not have to worry about using an app or going to a pay station or something like that? So what we talked about, and we've been talking with them about, okay, how many stalls do you all need to function? They got about a hundred or so stalls on their surface lot, and then they came back with, okay, you know, it would be nice if we had two hundred and fifty reserve stalls. This is a conversation we did have, you know, six or so months ago, a year ago, when we were looking at how to approach this, and at the time, that wasn't something that they wanted to pursue, but now kind of seeing it live, they've decided that, okay, maybe we should approach this possibility where they would have two hundred and fifty reserve stalls twenty-four seven. The idea that we've been talking about them is when you're entering off the west, you would have the second and third floors. Each individual stall would be signed, so that way it's clear that these are reserved for the Hilton. It allows the HCW and Hilton group to say, hey, when you come here, just park in the reserve stalls. Those are for you, and that's all they have to do. We're looking to, you know, find a balance with them on what the price per stall per month should be. You know, we think with that amount of stalls and based on the rates that you all have provided as it relates to permits, you know, right now, if you just want to buy one reserve stall permit, it's two hundred bucks a month. If you're buying two hundred and fifty, can you provide a bulk rate that gets you a little bit lower? But it's a consistent revenue stream because, as we mentioned earlier, some days they're not going to be using all those stalls, but they will be paying for them, and it doesn't look like, they may be being used, but on other days, they certainly will. So we're looking to get to a point where we can generate about a hundred thousand dollars annually. Over the next five years, we can use that to invest in those downtown garage investments that we've identified in the Walker Report, and then once we've completed those, that can help bring up that cost recovery into the Parking Services Fund. Any questions about that before I move on to the Aggieville piece of the update?
I have a question on, kind of, if we can go back to the budget. And I see we're doing better on cost recovery. Where do you think we fall on the line of diminishing returns on, like, enforcement versus the cost of enforcement, right? The revenue we can collect on enforcement versus the cost of enforcement?
Right.
You know, if we were to, and I'm not saying that we should do this, but if we were to just eliminate enforcement, yes, that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would go away.
This would go down, too, though.
Sure. And that's kind of what, where do you think we fall on that?
Again, you know, in two thousand twenty-three, we wrote a lot of warnings to gain compliance so that people would pay, and that's the result that you're seeing here of an increased revenue. So when you have that presence in the garage and you're monitoring that and you're helping people download the app, letting them know you need to pull a nose forward, things like that, so that we can ensure that those vehicles are there and they're there for that specific reason, that's what's going to lead to these revenue line items. And again, you're at a point right now where this encompasses two entire districts and residential color zones and two garages, and you have one revenue source, right? We're hopefully increasing that with the downtown garage, but then again, you're not charging in any on-street spot like other communities do or in any of the lots like other communities do. So there is that, but to your point, the less oversight that you have in the garage, in our opinion, is going to lead to less compliance.
I mean, I think, so Peter, you're, I mean, you're asking if our revenues will ever match our expenditures, and what is that path or when do we plan to meet that?
Yeah, and like, I mean, really, are we losing money by charging fees? I think I.
I, yes, I think, Jared.
So.
Of the budget, the enforcement portion of it is how much on the personnel, and Heath, that may be a question for you, because I know that from an expense side, we wouldn't, like, the horticulture person, the maintenance person, like, what, I mean, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, like, we still need to have it maintained and everything like that, but yeah.
And, you know, here's our projected revenue right here, and that's six and a half employees. Two and a half of those are parking enforcement officers.
Okay.
Right? So you're still going to be spending half a million dollars a year to, plus any other capital improvements.
Right.
One thing I didn't mention, and I forgot to mention, but we just had our annual inspection on the Aggieville elevator garage, in the garage, the Aggieville elevator, and the belt needs replaced, and it's.
Two years old.
It is. It gets a lot of use. There's also some shenanigans in the evenings and weekends that has led it to stopping and the fire department coming and letting people out because they're jumping on it, and we did install a camera, a security camera in the actual elevator last year, and that has actually decreased a lot of the. But there's been a lot of wear and tear on that in an easier place.
Yeah.
All those things are, those will still be there if you're not enforcing.
Yeah, and I mean, we would still need to enforce on-street parking and things like that. I think everybody generally expects us to do that, so.
Those are the two individuals.
Right.
Two and a half individuals who are doing that, along with enforcing in the revenue source area.
Okay. Thanks for talking me around and joining me in my journey, I guess.
Hey, Jared, that hundred, Jared, that hundred and fifteen thousand that we had allocated from TGT, that's still sitting in TGT except, or except for two thousand.
Minus two thousand.
Minus three thousand.
So, yeah.
And that's in our projections that we've been looking, like, that's included? And I couldn't pull up my thing. Okay.
That money in two thousand twenty-four was not expended, so that balance, because it wasn't really budgeted in two thousand twenty-four, but you all, you know, kind of authorized that, so the cash balance in the TGT fund did not decrease a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I was hoping we had already deducted the hundred and fifteen, and we got to add it back in, but no.
Other questions? Jared, so tell me again, how many spots are there for the Hilton? Two floors, and how many, how many places is that?
So right now, it's a four hundred and fifty stall garage, and there, we're in conversations with them to have two hundred and fifty of those reserved, so when you pull in.
So that would leave two hundred empties, I mean, available spots?
Yep.
So what happens, like, when we have the tree, Christmas tree lighting, and all kinds of people come over, and they tend to park?
That's one of the provisions of the agreement that we're trying to hash out, too, but in an effort to, on special occasions, allow shared use. The tree lighting is a great example of, maybe that's an event where HCW says the public can use those two hundred and fifty stalls. We tell the public, parking's free, come to the downtown garage because we want you to go to the tree lighting, and we agree upon that before it occurs.
Okay.
So there, we are trying to identify how we can accommodate that in the event that you got that four hundred-person group coming in and the Hilton's sitting there saying, hey, we don't have a conference or anything like that, and the stalls are going to be empty, let's, because, you know, they, of course, want to be a community partner, too, and the tree lighting is a good example of something that they participate in.
Sure. And what about Hilton's staff? You've got, you know.
They would utilize those stalls.
Catering and that kind of thing. They'll, they can, they can park in those two floors?
Yep. So those are going to be signed for them, and it's really at their discretion on how they're used, who they can tell to park there. So there's your example of you got a caterer coming in or a speaker coming in for an event, what have you. They're going to direct those individuals to park in those stalls.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to Aggieville.
From a parking enforcement perspective, a little over six hundred parking spaces within the district that we're monitoring, you have the new four hundred and fifty stall parking garage there, the one parking lot that's north of Nico's on Moro that has thirty-nine stalls, and that's a two-hour parking, and then we have over, little over a hundred and seventy on-street parking stalls throughout the district that are also Monday through Friday, eight A. M. to five P. M. Those rates went into effect in January of two thousand twenty-three. We had a model of first two hours free, two dollars an hour with a ten-dollar daily max when we started back in April. We did get a request from Aggieville to allow free parking in the garage Monday through Friday, eight A. M. to five P. M. So we, the Commission approved an updated resolution related to those fees, which allows that free parking during the day, but then on evenings and weekends, it's fifty cents for the first thirty minutes, a dollar for the first. it's fifty cents for the first thirty minutes, a dollar for the first hour, and then essentially two dollars an hour until the ten dollar daily max. But you can park in fifteen-minute increments for fifty cents. This is just a chart of the revenue that we, we have been generating in Aggieville. The red line indicates the twenty twenty-three monthly revenue that we had. Uh, the green is going to be your twenty twenty-four. Uh, and then we break, we like to break down just so you know that the hourly revenue source, which is about eighty thousand dollars a year in hourly revenue from the person who pulls in and either pays at the pay station or the, uh, Park Mobile app, and then the permit revenue, which is a consistent source of the remainder of that hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we were talking about earlier, uh, for those permits. Uh, you can see here, we, we did have kind of a dip in twenty twenty-four. One thing probably to note here, uh, you are on two different fee structures, but this was also, uh, the height of the North Manhattan Avenue construction, which probably led a lot of people to the garage uh, during that time period. I always think this, uh, data is interesting just related to how many people are actually pulling into the garage and parking related to a transaction. And when I say a transaction, that would be a person who pulls into the garage and registers through Park Mobile or a pay station. So it's not going to include, if I'm a full-time employee in Aggieville and I pay forty bucks a month for a permit, uh, and I come in and out and park and I don't have to register through those because I have a permit, it excludes, uh, that group right here that I'm, I'm going to talk about. But almost forty thousand transactions, uh, in the last year. Eighty-four percent of those transactions being Park Mobile transactions. So that certainly flipped from, uh, twenty twenty-three. I think the, the first couple of months when we started in twenty twenty-three, it was like eighty percent were using the pay station, twenty percent were using the app. By the end of the year, it was sixty, forty, and now we're at eight, over eighty percent using the Park Mobile app. On average, little over a hundred and eleven people parking in the garage uh, every day, and then the Monday through Friday transactions, so about nine thousand of those forty thousand were Monday through Friday transactions.
Yes, okay. Um, so when we, so if, if we subtract the eight to five transactions from the total transactions, is that the, um, evening and weekend tran, basically evening and weekend transactions?
This is all transactions, so when you pull into the garage, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, you still need to register.
Right.
Uh, so that would include this. So of the thirty-nine thousand transaction we had, about nine thousand one hundred were on Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM.
Okay. And that, that's kind of what I was asking.
So twenty-five percent roughly were that Monday through Friday, the, the other seventy-five percent evenings and weekends.
Okay. Cool. That's, that's good. That means people are using it when we expected them to, right?
Go ahead.
So back when we were discussing the, uh, Twelfth Streets and Laramie construction, uh, and Aggieville, uh, presented a, a request that essentially allow free parking, uh, during that closure that's going to happen on Moro Street, uh, between, uh, it'd be the intersection of Moro and Twelfth Street from May nineteenth through June twentieth. Um, if the commission wants to entertain, uh, that free parking as in twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, uh, that revenue loss would be about ten thousand dollars for that thirty-day timeframe, is, is your estimate there? We, if that is something we want to pursue, essentially, we wouldn't require any registration, uh, at the pay station or the app, uh, because when you use the app, it, it does have a cost associated with it. So we would just make it so that people can pull in and, and park, and we would have really limited enforcement in the garage during that time just related to people parking improperly or parking in handicap stalls or, or things like that. And then, of course, uh, you know, throughout construction, you guys were able to kind of comb through the twenty twenty-four report that we attached to the item. We're tracking that data monthly, uh, so we're always going to continue to track the use of the garage, the use of, uh, some of those districts so that you can kind of have that, uh, information at hand to see any trends and how things are being impacted for things like construction. And then, then these are just kind of a reminder of the, the feedback we're looking for tonight, one related to Aggieville. And then, um, any thoughts you might have on, uh, as we continue to have discussions with H C W for that agreement?
We'll do public comment first. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak to this issue?
Hello, my name's Rob Good. I'm one of the owners of So Long Saloon and Taco Ducha, right at Twelfth and Moro.
Can you sign in? Is there, the signing sheet still there?
Do that now?
Yeah.
While Rob's signing in, Jason, can you give the update on the plan or somebody on, because Moro Street will be closed. Can you, you know it.
I do have a few images if you'd like to go through those.
Rob, is that okay if we, I, I was wanting to see the construction plan, like the closing of the streets first before you talk, is that, is that okay? Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, I should have spoke up before we made you stand up.
So as mentioned in the room, Twelfth and Moro will initially kick off this construction project. There are, um, a couple of different images that I can, I can share this evening. The plan of, uh, why did that come through that way? Anyway, the road's closed basically from Moro at, um, North Manhattan Avenue. It's probably going to be better on the other slide. He gave me a pedestrian note, well, because it won't show the whole thing. So the pedestrian movement, they outlined for us, let me rotate this around so you, it's right with the world. Moro is on the top, running east and west, Twelfth Streets running north and south. Uh, I'll flip it back here in a minute, but I wanted you to get, uh, feel for just where the pedestrian movements will be allowed at the intersection. I do think primarily they will have pedestrians on the north side, which is the top side of the slide, uh, that you see today. It is one in which, um, as they work in this intersection, this movement of the pedestrian will be the primary focus. They will have opportunities, obviously, for pedestrians to move uh, along these businesses at Twelfth and Moro on, on the south leg. But as they move this construction south, that pedestrian movement's going to adjust, uh, throughout the project. But for that first thirty days, uh, this is what they anticipate. B H S will be out talking with businesses, um, within the next few days with this plan. Uh, tonight, really, the direction on the thirty-day window and whether or not parking in the garage will be uh, monitored and regulated will also be passed along by B H S to all the owners within Aggieville in the next week. So they are waiting for your direction and feedback this evening on that. But they will be, uh, delivering this as well, uh, from a pedestrian movement standpoint. Let me go ahead and just bring up G I S, the, um, the maps that we have, they're still working on just exactly where they're going to close Moro. There's a area here on the east end where Moro will be open. It'll allow you to go in the alley between, uh, the old K State Bank building and, and Gwen's parking lot and then our parking lot. So you'll be able to go in the alley, you'll be able to come down. I believe it's this side, it'll keep you, uh, faced in the right direction from a parking standpoint. You're going to be able to hop onto Moro and go back to the north to park in these stalls. You'll be able also to go out Moro. We're not, we're not exactly sure if we're going to let you in Moro to reach this parking because there may be conflicts up at the alley. But we're going to try to move that traffic through Aggieville to keep this parking lot and the private parking lot open. And there are efforts in, in place right now to get that signed appropriately and allow that possibly two-way movement of traffic here at this intersection. It will take away the dedicated right and it'll give it back to one out, one in.
Jason, um, when the police block off Moro in Aggieville during weekends, where are those closures?
I have not been down there, but there might be some people behind me who are better informed on that. Um, I, I have heard about police cars here, I have heard about police cars here, but Dennis will have a much better answer for you when he makes his comments. Um, the Moro shutdown will, for that thirty days, we're planning to come all the way to North Manhattan and not allow traffic in the in the twelve-hundred block or eleven-hundred block up till the point of our parking lot. Uh, we did look at this from a perspective of how many stalls could we actually get in this block? And keep it away from the construction and allow for two-way traffic? Because you can't get out, you gotta go back in the way you came in. Eight stalls are what we could have generated. And for thirty days, we felt like, let's just move them to the garage for, for that thirty-day window. Trying to get Moro and Twelfth open just as fast as we can. B H S is still committed to the thirty-day window. May nineteenth through June nineteenth is the goal. Any questions I can answer in terms of Moro being blocked here at North Manhattan and and Moro, all the way down to Moro and really the exit of our parking lot?
No, thank you. That was helpful.
Yep.
I'm back. So, um, as, as business owners, um, obviously parking's really, really important. And, uh, I think we all expected challenges and, and delays and unforeseen and things that we can't control through this whole process, so, I mean, we weren't naive to that. The form, some of those has come in, a, and you know, we go, as long as we've gone with nothing happening and financing. It's all out of our control, but there's certain things that clearly were a surprise to everyone, I imagine. So it, it, the, the pain, there's still a lot more pain coming. I'm a believer that, that when Aggieville's done, when, when the last brick has been laid, the last plant has been planted, that's the time when we all, by all, I mean, private city, that's, that's the time that we all can benefit from it. So any help that we can get now and in the future to keep access to the business district? Because at the end of the day, that's, that's, for us to survive, people have to be able to get to us. And it just, I, I, I appreciate the, the, the thirty days, and I think that is a great start. But I just, I just, big picture-wise, any opportunity that we have to provide parking for our customers, I think, is really, really, really important. Because when this is all over, not all of us are going to be there. That's a fact. There are people that aren't going to make it. There are businesses that aren't going to make it. And it's, a, a, and that breaks my heart. I've been there thirty-five years and, uh, um, it's, it's like I said, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be awesome when it's done. But anything we can do to ease the pain, uh, anything you can do to help ease that pain, would really, really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for doing this work session. We really do need to talk about this a little bit. Uh, just, uh, I can answer questions about road restrictions too. But, um, but just talking about what, what's going to happen, um, with this road construction, uh, May nineteenth is the date that we've been given, is May nineteen, May nineteenth, which is going to be, you know, it's very thankful that's the Monday after K State goes through graduation. Uh, that helps us out somewhat, and, uh, that's great. And, um, you know, and, and I know, I know they're going to try the best they can, but, um, I've been around this long enough, we have to say it's going to be thirty days down. You know, that means, yeah, that means in thirty days, we're not going to get any rain or a, any other issues that might, might drag it out. And, uh, just, you know, as a, as, as Jason had mentioned, you know, that we tried to look at different ways of allowing some cars to come in on Moro and back out and reversing direction, and you know, and we know that that's, that, that's really difficult. And, uh, just as an overview, to let you know, you know, there's a hundred businesses, um, in, in Aggieville District. And, uh, uh, about forty-eight of them are on Moro Street, on those two, on those two blocks. And, uh, that's not counting, uh, what's on Twelfth Street, which is going to get impacted also. So, um, yeah, this is, this is really important for us to, to try to get some relief and try to keep these businesses viable a, as we can. Uh, you know, there's going to be, you know, enough stress and we know that that's coming. Uh, but, uh, this, this would go a long ways to, to really help us out. I know we have, we had a pre-construction meeting in here, uh, three, three or so weeks ago. And, uh, we also had, um, Ashley with, uh, Access Aggieville. And, and, and since then, we've had another conversation about what else we can do to, uh, you know, get that, get that, uh, Park Mobile app generated, you know, talked about, uh, doing that on some signage, on table tents, to get into the businesses, to let people know, uh, you know, to, to download that app, to make sure you're ready to go. And, you know, but now we're talking about not even doing that, but I think even with that, the more, the more that we can do that, to put that in people's hands and on their phones, and we'll do everything we can to help do that, I think coming out of this, we will generate more people, uh, using the parking garage. So it is vital for us, and, and I hope you, uh, can see that and, and help us out. Anything I can answer?
Dennis, if you could just address the question of, um, i- is Aggieville still being closed off by the police?
Yes, ma'am.
On weekends? And where do the police park?
Uh, what they, what they're doing is basically they're cutting off Moro and Twelfth Streets. So they've been setting up a barricade, um, uh, kind of, you know, we'll just name businesses, between Buffalo Wild Wings and Dusty Bookshelf. So that keeps North Manhattan Avenue open. Um, and, and that, you know, that does allow some through traffic, and it kind of keeps the, uh, the parking garage available, and it keeps some of that, uh, safe ride program, which right now we have cars, uh, using space right in front of a Chipotle to help pick up people who need rides. Uh, but then on, uh, Twelfth Street, they are, um, north and south of, of the intersection of Twelfth and Moro, uh, at, at the alleys. North and south, they're setting up barricades there too. So basically what's, what they're doing is if, if, uh, before that time of night, which right now, uh, is generally speaking, it's, it's eleven o'clock. If, um, if you were already parked on Moro before eleven o'clock, you're allowed to stay there, and just whenever, whenever you decide to leave, you can get in your car and leave. They're just not adding any more cars, and so they're just trying to, trying to trim that down. And, uh, um, we're still having conversations about, uh, about how that's being done and you know, wh- how necessary that is, so, uh, that may not be a discussion for this group, you know. I'll, I'll talk with John later about, about that one.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is Gwen Ruffel. I live at eleven seventeen Hilton Heights Road here in Manhattan. I've been, um, involved in Aggieville for a number of decades with regards to my interest in trying to create a district that, uh, was, uh, one that was very vibrant to the community in terms of hopefully generating more retail, uh, coming into the district. Uh, it's been a very challenging process over the years that I've been working on it. Uh, it's been a very challenging process over the years that I've been working on it. And, um, with regards to the good work that started in twenty seventeen, uh, when we looked at the Aggieville vision, uh, it generated a lot of interest in the community as well as the businesses, um, within the district. And it was the expectations that all of that good work and vision would have been completed and we'd have, uh, the redevelopment, you know, within Aggieville. That hasn't happened, um, due to a number of different circumstances. The district is really being challenged by the lack of progressive redevelopment. Uh, the parking garage, um, was great coming right after the, um, Marriott building, its hotel. And Dennis becomes stymied with regards to, uh, what can be done. And, um, you know, with regards to construction in our community, when there's construction, people tend to avoid coming to the district. And the businesses within the district have been suffering as a result of, um, the construction that has taken place as well as the fact that, um, the redevelopment hasn't progressed in a fashion that would truly support the infrastructure that's already there in place with the public parking garage. So, it's, um, a very challenging position, and the businesses within the district. And I know from, you know, the tenants that I have and the buildings that we have in the district, their revenues have declined. Year over year, in this past year, uh, was, was down at an average of fifteen percent of revenue over the previous year. And those small businesses cannot sustain those kinds of losses at all. And part of the uniqueness of Aggieville is the artisan, um, small businesses that are there. The, uh, retail, you know, the franchise stores, you know, they're there, they can be seen anywhere. But it's the uniqueness that I'm really concerned about and losing. When you look at how technology's coming in and taking over, you know, the restaurants, for, for example, you know, where they're no longer having people interfacing, you know, William Brothers going over there and walking into their lobby, it's all technology. You know, you're not even seeing people face to face. Uh, Pizza Hut's doing that, more and more of that's coming. I'm sorry, I'm taking more of my time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Okay. Oh.
Good evening. My name is Amber Starling. I'm the founder and CEO of Goodwich Cleaning Services, a business that is located in the downtown district. In two thousand and ten, the City of Manhattan paid the president and co-founder of H C W, Rick Huffman, seven million dollars to build the downtown garage. There were key defects in its construction that were mentioned in this presentation. After the fact, then-city manager Ron Fair admitted that his inspectors missed these defects when they initially inspected and approved the building. For thirteen years, this public infrastructure was free for all to use, except to the guests of the Hilton Garden Inn. Huffman charged his guests ten dollars a day to park in this free resource for the past thirteen years. I'll ignore the legality of a private business charging for the use of public infrastructure. Last year, the city implemented a fee schedule for the use of this infrastructure to offset maintenance and repair costs. H C W lobbied for special treatment on the grounds that they had signed private contracts with conventions offering free parking and that to pay the city's fee would cause them undue hardship. We bent over backwards to accommodate Huffman, although he and H C W are Missouri residents, hoping that the sales tax revenue would offset the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars we were offering him to cover parking for convention attendees and that it would not then cause undue hardship to the city. When a department is losing almost half a million dollars a year, a hundred and, another one hundred and fifteen thousand would have presented undue hardship. This financial statement was bad, but it could have been worse. In my research, I wondered if the property taxes H C W pays to help recoup those losses, uh, you know, actually does recoup. But I found a very curious data point. Although the valuation increases annually for most properties I have ever researched, the Hilton Garden Inn's assessed value decreased by a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars this year. To summarize, H C W built the garage poorly in two thousand and ten, and we are paying to mend those defects to this day. H C W charged their guests for use of public infrastructure. H C W lobbied to not pay the fees necessary to repair and maintain the garage. H C W's property tax bill actually decreased this year. No decisions are being made tonight, but it is important to keep this history in mind when negotiating with H C W. In my opinion, it is time for Rick to pay his fair share like the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in, Amber?
I am.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Um, commissioners, do I say that? Correction?
I mean, I'll start with Aggieville. I'm, I'm supportive of us letting them, uh, utilize, letting people utilize that space for free during the construction. Um, the thirty days, to Dennis's point, I would say if that specific intersection continues longer than thirty days, I would be fine with continuing that through that bulk construction time.
Jamie, are you talking twenty-four hours or only during the daytime as we have been doing?
Oh, no, I, I would go ahead and extend that, um, extend what we're doing during the day to not, not charge people.
Yeah, I'm kinda leaning towards that for the period of construction.
Yeah, for that, for that thirty-day period.
Yeah, and again, like, leaving that flexible, um, for construction delays and things like that, that we all understand will happen. Yeah, cause like, that is a lot of parking that we're taking away. And I, I, I do think that it's important for us to, to help with those, um, you know, it is, it is necessary that we do this construction. There's not really any way around it. Um, but I think this is kinda something that we can really, we can do to, to help support some of those losses.
I agree. We need to help the businesses out down there and, uh, I won't repeat, yes.
I'm ambivalent, I'll be honest, um, especially since we know that the parking lot, the parking garage has been generating revenue, um, in the evenings when we've been charging. And even when those streets have been closed during weekend hours, when a lot of the bars certainly see, uh, much of their business. So, I'm, I'm just kind of waffling on this.
I think my concern is the thirty days, but they're going to come back because there's gonna be disruption in Aggieville much longer than that, once they finish that thing. And we do have the responsibility to, um, have people, users, pay for the cost of having the ability to park. Um, you know, there's always, there's, when I go to Aggieville, I park in the university lot, which is just across the street from the Blumont Hotel. And it's free after five o'clock. Um, I kinda think we have to look at the bigger picture here, and as much as I'd like to help those people with their thirty days, I'm afraid that we're setting a precedent for helping them for a year and a half. And the rest, the greater Manhattan has to pay for the parking garage. But thoughts?
I'm s- still to help out the businesses down there for that construction period.
Um, Susan, I, I see, I, I hear your point about the, you know, we're still seeing revenue on weekends when, um, Moro Street's shut down. I think my concern would be that it'll be very confusing, um, if we try to do, you know, free parking Monday through Friday, twenty-four hours, until seven o'clock on Friday, and then during the weekend, you gotta pay, like, I think that's just gonna be very confusing to people. Um, and probably turn people off to using the garage in general. I think there may be a good point to what Dennis said about, you know, people being able to use this, um, during this time period may determine that, hey, maybe it is easier for me to just go use the garage instead of trying to go and find a spot on Moro. Yeah. I would, I think we should try and make this as simple as possible whichever way we go.
Jared, what's the current situation? Can you remind us one more time?
So, right now, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, you pull into the garage, you register, you still have to register, and it's free, no charge to the user. Anything beyond five PM on those weekday evenings, all the way through eight AM the next day, there is that fee structure. And then anytime, you know, the, the entire day on Saturdays and Sundays, it's paid to park, you know, based on that, the existing fee structure.
But, yeah, you're also saying for that time period, they wouldn't have to register or anything, they just can come in and?
Yeah, well, financially, it wouldn't make sense for us to make people register twenty-four, seven, seven days a week if you're not generating any revenue because there's transaction costs associated with using Park Mobile.
Yeah, so that kind of then also adds to the complexity of our decision, or at least is another variable we happen to, have to take into account is like, if we'd make it twenty-four hours during the week, free parking, but still people have to go in and register, that's even fewer opportunities for us to make up that, cause we get, we ch- we get charged a fee every time somebody registers, whether they get charged money or not. Is that correct?
Thirty-five cents.
Thirty-five cents, just for someone to go in and park.
But we don't pass that on to the user, so.
Right, but that's.
Less revenue we receive, so.
Right.
In the event five thousand people parked in the garage during that month and they registered, but there was no fee, each transaction is gonna cost thirty-five cents.
Yeah.
I just think for the district, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to come out with, this is starting on May nineteenth, more construction in Aggieville. This road's gonna be closed down. At least this gives the businesses something to say. But on the good side, you don't have to register, you don't have to do anything, it's free in the garage, come on down. I mean, it gives some sort of positive offset.
Yeah.
To the downside.
Uh, how many stalls do we have on Moro, like, on those two blocks, roughly?
I'd have to count. Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
One, one thing, if, if you have ever drove by, we do have some signage right here, so in the event that parking is free, we, we could switch that out with some temporary signage to educate the people coming by with a little arrow that says, you know, sorry for the construction, park here.
So, I guess, you know, Karen, my concern is, we're taking away, now, not necessarily as a choice, but there is available free parking in Aggieville that folks can choose to drive around the block until they find a spot.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, so we have eighty-five stalls in Aggieville.
Someone was whispering to me in the audience.
Well, and I would just point out, if it's free in the daytime, those are the small shoppies that have, you know, um, they're not the, the giant beer halls that sell, you know? So, this, so the daytime, um, support for those shops would be, but I'm willing to listen to, you know, we need to give direction to Daniel.
And that, that's my perspective as well. You know, the free parking during the day is most of, going to help the retail businesses that close at five o'clock.
Yeah, um, I think there's still, there, there are a few of those businesses down there that, that are gonna, that really do, uh, will probably be less affected by this. Um, but I think, you know, especially restaurant, you, you know how slim the margins are in a restaurant, and cash flow is very important. And, you know, this can, this can have some serious disruptions. I know, like, um, I've talked to, uh, Jeff from Maze, and even just having police officers on the corner of Twelfth and Laramie keeps people from walking down that block, uh, to go to his bar. Um, and so that, i- it really is, can be, you know, uh, this is gonna have some disruption, and I, 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 I don't doubt that at all. Now, will, will the free parking help that?
I would like to point out, the ten thousand dollars that I feel like Jared said is what the monthly revenue is. But that's assuming people are still coming despite the disruptions.
Sure, that, that's just based on last year's prediction, so we're not gonna charge any hourly revenue. And we're also going to tell all of our people who pay for monthly permits that they don't have to pay that month. So, we, we do lose on the hourly revenue and for the permit revenue, which is ten thousand bucks.
Yeah, yeah, assuming everyone's still coming.
With that assumption, yeah, that's just based on last year, last summer.
Unfortunately, I think people will, will potentially avoid that because of construction, which is unfortunate. I, I may be more on the fence on the people with the permits unless on, on foregoing those. I'm assuming those are employees and business.
I mean, if we're gonna let everybody else park for free, we can't charge permit holders.
You know, we, we have the fee resolution that you adopted that, that talks about the hourly rate and it talks about the permit rate, and it just.
So, it just made the whole thing.
Wouldn't make sense to charge one and not the other.
Okay.
I guess I'd, you know, I'm not, I'm not adverse to this action for this month. Um, I am persuaded that, uh, as Karen pointed out, this is the tip of a, one tip of a very long and large iceberg. And, um, you know, is Dennis going to be coming back to us in a few months when the whole Moro Street project begins? And, you know, are we going to be in the same hole that Amber just alluded to in terms of having no revenue from the parking garage for eighteen months? When it will be reaching an age where it needs maintenance, so, um...
Did Aggieville have any other requests? Aggieville Business Association request anything different or anything else, just the thirty days so far?
This is all I'm aware of.
Okay.
Daniel, do you feel that you have direction?
I mean, do we still have, I mean, it looked like we had three commissioners that were.
Yeah, I'm still.
Three and a half almost.
Yeah. Certainly, hopefully, we're talking about it.
I, I do. What I'm hearing tonight is that there's consensus, um, to move forward with drafting a resolution for you all to approve at your next meeting that would change the fee schedule, um, in the Aggieville garage from May nineteenth to June nineteenth. With flexibility, if there are delays in construction as well. Uh, we'll continue to monitor the situation, and of course, um, we'll continue to work with the Aggieville, uh, businesses and the Aggieville business district. We understand this is a challenge, um, for those businesses. Uh, we also understand that this is much-needed infrastructure improvements, and, um, anyway, I think that Aggieville is a cherished district, um, to all of us, including the community across the state, even in the nation, so, uh, we will do what we can to help.
Okay. I think we should also come, you should come back to us to talk about how we're going to fix the downtown parking garage because there are a lot of, once we, once we have an agreement perhaps with the Hilton.
Yeah.
What, what's, you know, what's the five-year plan to get it back up and looking good?
Did, did you all wanna have some additional discussion about, uh, that downtown garage and that agreement? Do you all have any feedback for us on that, excuse me?
Yeah, I mean, I think you should go ahead and continue with the negotiations with that and bring it, bring it back to us.
Yeah, um, couple of things, I just, I know, we, we checked, chatted about this, Danielle, but, um, I think we really need to figure out and be clear on who will be responsible for maintenance as far as keeping those stalls clean. And that part of the garage, um, you know, as a, as a tenant, I think it is not unreasonable to expect, um, or to expect a tenant to keep what they're leasing, um, serviceable. Um, and I think the fee that H C W does plan to charge to guests for parking should be a part of that conversation. And, um, you know, will they, will it be an opt-out kind of fee? Because I know when, um, Brad Everett came before us last year, he said, you know, if people come down and complain about the ten-dollar fee, they usually take it off. Um, but that requires an effort on the part of the guest to say, I'm not parked in your garage, or in your parking lot. Um, I'm not chart, paying this fee. You know, I think that's, that's, needs to be part of the discussion as well. Because while they are gonna be paying some rent, um, and they, they could potentially, I guess, try and recoup, recoup some of that, I think it is, I don't know, I don't know how much I want them to be profiting off of our parking garage.
Uh, Jared, can you remind me, what, what are the fees going to be in there for the public spots?
Right now, the resolution is the first two hours are free.
Okay.
Two dollars an hour with a ten-dollar daily max.
Okay, and so we won't have to worry about the discount thing, which wasn't?
Unlikely, given ninety-nine percent of the. ninety-nine percent of the groups we were associated with were related to the conference center.
Um, and then the, we do the permits for the, or the, am I saying that?
Yep. Yeah, we do monthly permits with individuals who wanna access the garage. So they register with us, they give us their license plate, and then based on their permit, whether it's a part-time employee, a full-time employee, which usually they have to provide proof that they work in the district, or if it's like a twenty-four seven reserved, or we have what we call a seven A M, seven P M one, they're allowed to park during those times and just pull in because of their licenses registered.
Okay.
I would continue in downtown, so we do envision that the entrance off of the east side and those first fifty stalls would be open to the public and then those on the fourth and above would be available to the public.
I, I mean, I'm assuming H C W wouldn't want to have contracts with people for their spaces on permits, but I don't know if we can restrict that. Two hundred and fifty, I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with that number of reserved stalls, given the amount of hotel rooms. Granted, if they're using it for the conference space, I, I'm just struggling a little bit with the two hundred and fifty reserved stalls.
I would think it's more for conferences than for hotel occupancy.
Yeah, and I, I think I'd hope that the conference people are using the city app for that.
In the future, they would, because the Hilton is the one managing those conference goers, so they're gonna direct their conference center guests to use their reserve stalls.
It's kind of a, you know, it, it, it moves it now to a subscription model, right? Where, uh, you know, they're, they're gonna pay us a set fee every month, and so we will then know exactly how much we're gonna get for those stalls. I, I think this can end up being beneficial because we can, we can really be able to plan on that.
Yeah, they're carrying more of the, the risk of those not being used.
Jared, are you, um, do you have a timeframe in mind? I mean, would this be a contract for one year with the opportunity for both parties to review at some point?
We proposed originally a five-year agreement. We do, uh, we, we are having conversations about what that first year monthly payment would be versus what this year two, year three, and year four. Because they, you know, they have concerns about that, but we're obviously, we understand the amount of stalls we have and how many people are parking in the garage and what we think we can generate and and I would like to bring that back as, as quickly as possible, mainly because we, we continue to not generate revenue. But we're, we're trying to work with them so that we can create a solution that benefits them and their guests, you know, because we do have people coming into the community using this garage and the, the best experience for them is to just pull in and park. Right? But if we, we can't work that out, you know, we're gonna have to go back to the promo code approach, which isn't ideal, but it's, it's the, the way to do it. Or not do promo codes at all and they just pay to park.
I think we need to kind, since they're bringing it back, we have a lot of people who are interested in the next two items. I think we better close this. I think we've given direction.
Give them one, but they may not answer. Yeah, I'm just curious in this whole agreement, how they, do they have any monitoring mechanism for who's using their stalls? Because, um, if people kind of figure out they have no monitoring mechanism, I'll just go park in the, in their stall. And does it include just a guest that's staying overnight or any event that's there, a wedding, or I go there for military relations lunch? So I just park in their stall, so I don't have to, uh, pay?
That's on them to articulate to the users, so a wedding, for example, that wedding group who has a contract with H C W. If they want to tell that wedding group, hey, we have two hundred and fifty stalls, park there, that's what they are allowed to do. How they track who's using those stalls and their ability to even come to the city and say, someone's parking in our stall that's not ours, that we need to be able to prove those things. And that, so there is gonna be an effort that's needed from them to be able to track that.
Yeah, because I just, I could just see people constantly parking in their stalls because.
Right, and then we're not getting the revenue from those that.
Yeah, so I just think when it comes back, maybe talk.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, uh, what generated this report that was attached to the, uh, to the agenda?
So we track all of our monthly data across all of our departments in something called Clearpoint.
Okay.
And it spits out that report.
It's nice, I like it.
Cool, yeah. Love data.
So Danielle, are you comfortable?
Thank you, Mayor McCullough. We will continue negotiations with H C W, uh, and we will work on a resolution for the Aggieville garage in May and June.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Flint Hills Electric Vehicle Readiness Plan update.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jared Tremblay. I'm the Planning Manager of the Flint Hills M P O. And today, we're gonna go over the recently completed Flint Hills Electric Vehicle Readiness Plan that was completed with the help of Olson. I just want to start out first and foremost, you know, this is a contentious item, maybe just behind parking. But this report is not to promote or push electric vehicles. It's not an action plan, you're not beholden to take any action, we're not requesting funding. Rather, this report is really just to gauge where our region is today, both in terms of local governments, but also the public. And the hope is that there are some policies and maybe some infrastructure in the future that may be needed if and when electric vehicles become a major factor in the Flint Hills. Three main types of vehicles, we have light utility vehicles, medium and heavy utility vehicles, and agricultural vehicles. This report focuses solely on light utility vehicles, not on the other two. And in fact, there's a document called the National Blueprint for Transportation Decarbonization. And this says the same thing. We have to figure out the light, the more simple, the light utility vehicles before we even begin to think about agriculture and the large trucks. So the focus, even at the national level, is on the small vehicles. You don't have to answer this question. But yes. There are too many types of electric vehicles. There are plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. Think of a Prius Prime, for example. You plug it in and then once the battery's dead, it becomes a standard hybrid. Again, the focus of this plan are battery electric vehicles, or what we all know of as just electric vehicles. Three main, three types of charging, level one charging, it's plugging in a microwave into a standard outlet. That's not the focus here either. What we're really looking at are level two and then level three, which is also called D C fast charging or just fast charging. So level two and level three are the keys here. These are the sorts of things that you find out in the public across the United States. Level two takes two to eight hours to charge a vehicle. Level three, ten minutes to a hundred and forty minutes. A new Tesla will do a hundred and fifty miles in fifteen minutes. Where do you find these things? You find level twos in your homes, near retail, near offices, whereas level three is more of a gas station style facility. And so you use level two mainly for your day-to-day driving, something you could have at a K-State game, a few hours while you're there, or maybe overnight at a hotel. Again, level three are for your longer trips at a gas station style. Demand pricing is an important concept. Evergy is our, our energy provider here. You are signed up for one of the four plans on the bottom left. And we're gonna take a look at the most expensive plan at the most expensive time of the year, which is the summer peak-based plan. So if you're signed up for this plan, which I am, on a summer weekday, Monday through Friday, from four to eight P M, I am charged twenty-four cents per kilowatt hour. They're telling me you can use our electricity, but it's gonna cost you, because everyone needs to use electricity. But if you wait until twelve to six A M, you're only paying four cents a kilowatt hour. It's like a toll. If you want to use it, go for it, but it's gonna cost you. Level three charging is market rate. It is not a set. So if you go up to a D C fast charger on I seventy, it's gonna be the price. You could, you could charge at five P M on a hundred-degree day, it is gonna cost you. So I just want to make that distinction there. Level two is a set rate, level three is a market rate. So that demand pricing has proved to be very effective. It makes people charge at certain times. In fact, over eighty percent, some studies show up to ninety percent of charging is done at night. When demand on the grid is low and there's excess energy that needs to be used, there's new customers, new demand for this energy that used to go unused. It takes, you know, ten to twenty hours to fire, fire up a coal-powered generation plant. It's not like you just turn the switch and all of a sudden. So it takes a long time to build these, you don't turn it off either. So this is a new, new source of, of revenue for these companies. And the other thing, the other, the third part of this is that these chargers are tied in directly to the grid. They're using A I smart charging. So even if you have, uh, a multi-unit residence and there are ten chargers outside and they're all plugged in, they're not all plugged in pulling energy as if they were microwaves or a vacuum. What's happening is the A I is realizing, okay, we have this much power that needs to be supplied over this time. This is what's coming in the grid and it's functioning and maintaining, so you're not blowing fuses. And so it knows what it needs to do. So these three things have become very effective. But I want to be clear on what, what, what life is like with an electric vehicle. So day-to-day, this is what we have right now. We have a gasoline vehicle. My car has two hundred and sixty-four thousand miles on it, so this is my life. I wake up on Monday, I go to the gas station, I fill gas, I go to work and I go home. And then a few days later, my car's empty, I fill it back up at the gas station. We've been doing it for a hundred and twenty years. Electric vehicles, day-to-day, are not that. You wake up, it's charged. You use it throughout the day, you come home, you charge it back up, you wake up, it's charged again. We live in a gas station model life right now. E Vs day-to-day are cell phones. Again, use it during the day, it's ready in the morning. Longer trips are different. We're all familiar with what we do here. We fill up gas, we go to wherever we're going, we come home, maybe fill up gas again. E Vs function much more like a standard vehicle in this. So you charge up at home overnight, you go to where you're going, and if you need to top off, then you go to one of the gas, gas station style level three chargers before coming home. And it's worth noting that ninety-five percent of trips are, are under a hundred miles in the United States. In twenty twenty-four, the average electric vehicle range was two hundred and eighty-four miles. Chevy Equinox, doesn't matter if you buy the cheapest one L T or the most expensive, your, your range is three hundred and twenty miles. Some Teslas get up to three hundred and sixty-three. So the mileage, the average range on these E Vs is much higher than it was a number of years ago. Maintenance is a major, major issue with owning a vehicle. According to triple A in twenty twenty-four, the average cost of maintenance alone, oil changes, repairs, tires, was one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars across the United States and E Vs are at least thirty percent cheaper per year overall. And the basic reason for that is because a gas vehicle's powertrain has fourteen hundred components and an E V's has two hundred. Also why some car companies enjoy them, less labor, high costs. This is just a simple chart, just to compare for you real quickly. You can see the E Vs are on the bottom, there are less checkmarks. There is no exhaust, there's no, there's no, um, there's no mufflers, there's no catalytic converter, there's no oil changes, you have less filters, timing belts, all these sorts of things. The braking is even much less. While you do brake, you have regenerative braking, so it's putting power back into the battery. It makes brakes extend the life for a lot longer. We've heard a lot about tires. E V tires are thirty percent more expensive than standard tires for a gas vehicle. That's for three reasons. They have to have special processes and engineering to handle, um, both the torque, the power, the torque and the power of the engines, but also for better efficiency, they roll more efficiently. And then finally, E Vs are higher. So not only do they cost more, they only last about thirty thousand miles on average instead of, instead of fifty for an average, uh, average tire. So just plotted out real simple here, if, if the average cost was a thousand dollars to do a tire replacement on your gas vehicle, then you needed about fifty thousand, you needed a hundred thousand, so over the life of your vehicle, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, you've had two tire changes, it costs you two thousand bucks. And you can see what the comparison would be there. Fifty-two hundred to two thousand dollars. It's important to note that that increase in cost for tires is calculated into that thirty percent savings still. In twenty twenty-four, there were seventy-eight million vehicles sold around the world. Twenty-two percent were electric vehicles. The United States accounted for fifteen point nine million. We're at eight point two or one point three million vehicles. But China sold thirty-one point four million vehicles, forty percent of which were electric. Our car companies are international and the world's largest market is highly electrified. Kansas, there were eighty-eight thousand vehicles sold last year. And the Flint Hills and these three counties, Riley, Potawatomi, and Geary, were about two percent of new vehicles last year were electric. Now, the year before, we were less than that and there were still two hundred and thirty-five registered by that time. Almost two hundred of them were in Manhattan alone. Kansas City last year was at six to seven percent. This is where we've been, we're that dark line on the bottom, that lighter line is the U S average. You can see we're falling behind, we're not behind. Let me rephrase that. We are not where everyone else is. But the point of it is, is that we're not K C, we're not California, we're not China. And so again, this, this plan is to help us be ready if and when things do change, if we do tick up. And also, we want to be able to accommodate people that have them right now and we'd like to profit off of them. If they're coming to town and they need to charge, we should have it. Junction City Hospital, the hospital in Junction City has a level two charger installed specifically for a doctor that comes from Kansas City. It was installed for him. This is where our chargers are currently in the region. There is also one now in Junction City, uh, not that one I mentioned, that one's private, but there is one at a, at a hospital there. But basically, we have about twenty stations. We don't have a lot. Level three stations, those fast ones, those gas station ones, we have, actually have two. One used to be raided, someone put the information incorrectly. We have two stations now. I just found that out today.
So there isn't a station along I seventy in Junction City?
We, uh, no, we can get to that in a few minutes here. We're, we're, we're trying. And I want to be clear, from what we've heard from every city and county in the region, is that you do not want to be involved in the owning and operation of these. Rather, the point of this is for you and for everyone to be prepared and be able to support private business if and when they decide to do this. That's the point of this. People have spent a lot of money on doing things and there's a lot of lessons learned. And we don't want to spend money we shouldn't, but we also want to be ready if and when we need to be. So we did some G I S analysis. The darker the color of green, uh, the more desirable the location. So here's what Manhattan looks like. And in this analysis, points were given to things like office, office areas, entertainment areas, hotels, and so on and so forth. So points were accumulated. The blue dots, which I know are quite small, are where existing chargers are. And so those points were subtracted away. So you can see that in the downtown area, near the parking garage or the conference center, it's less demand. That's because there's already three in that area that are pulling down the demand. Obviously, Aggieville and then West Loop are the two key locations for the level two, those day-to-day, those two to four-hour sort of charging periods. We also did a level three analysis of, okay, where should those fast gas station style chargers be located? And we can talk about this now, Commissioner Opel. With bill legislation, it came out that there's going to be a N E V program, a National E V Investment Program. And that, and that legislation dictated that there be these alternative fuel corridors. And in Kansas, those are the interstates and then also the fifty-four, four hundred, uh, route along the southern part of the state. But I seventy is an alternative fuel corridor. And it dictates that there be a level three fast chargers every fifty miles along an alternative fuel corridor. Well, currently, there are some in Abilene, numerous ones in Abilene, almost twenty of them. And then the Maple Hill stop out there, if you know, west of Topeka has some. I think it's entirely plausible that, uh, the Alma stop, that Flint Hills, the new gas station there gets some. But still, from Alma's exit to Abilene is fifty-two miles. We have to have one located somewhere. Manhattan is not eligible for N E V funding. You have to be within one driven mile of the alternative fuel corridor.
Is that, is that program still active?
It's on hold.
Okay.
There, you can look up something called Charge Up Kansas. There have been about twenty different, uh, locations that have been selected, and these are big companies. These are Loves, twenty-four seven, Casey's, that realize, they, they feel the opportunity's there, they're going after it. So those were just about to be built and they've now been put on hold. But the only place in our region that could really have one is in Junction City, and so we've been working with the chamber to try to get one. Manhattan is not eligible. But within Manhattan, if someone were to put one in, the darker green, obviously up by the stadium, K State, and then downtown are the, are the three top locations. Oh, there it is, and more clearly for you. Future demand. What you see here are three different potential adoption rates, a low, a medium, and a high. And what was modeled was this medium adoption rate. It talks about ten percent of new vehicles being E Vs in twenty thirty. So if that were to happen, the model looked at, okay, what percentage are likely to be pickups and sedans? And how much energy is required for each one of those? You know, pickups have a lot larger battery base, they take more energy. Okay, great, so they have a number there. And then it shows that about eighty-eight percent of the time, eighty-eight percent of charging would be done at home. And then the rest of that time, out in the community, the chargers that would be needed would be utilized about twenty-five percent of the time. And what it showed is that today, we probably have a gap of about twenty stations, but by twenty thirty, if that medium scenario was adopted, we would need two hundred and fifteen level two stations. So for home charging plus the public charging with those two hundred and fifteen stations, that would require about forty-five megawatts of power a day in twenty thirty. We had a public survey and without doubt, the thing we heard the most was, E Vs are going to overload the grid, we can't handle it, we're not ready. Fair enough. It's a concern of ours as well. So we had a series of stakeholder. Fair enough. It's a concern of ours as well. So we had a series of stakeholder groups. Evergy was the key stakeholder. We had the Senior Manager of Electrification. This gentleman's job is to lead a team that looks at where Evergy's capacity and production is today. What are the future demands going to be? And how do they get there? Okay, that is his entire job. And he confirmed that, yes, they are incorporating projection curves of EVs into the future for Ever, Evergy's users. And not only that, he does not foresee any future challenges in meeting the generation and transmission demand from future EV adoption in our three-county region. They expect problems in Kansas City in denser areas, but in our region, they do not expect issues. Now, we're going to get to a caveat to that in a second. Yes?
Jared, we know that Evergy was trying to put a station in, down in Ashland Bottoms. And they've since tabled that plan, but as part of the, part of that was in order to get additional electricity to the west side of Manhattan, specifically the, um, airport industrial area and Ogden.
Yep.
How does that jibe with the area that you've noted as being this desirable card or to have?
Well, are more desirable areas further, further east than that, but it would still tie into the same local grid.
Further east or further west?
East.
East for the Manhattan desirable area would be further east than the west side of town.
All right, so we're not talking about the, the.
It all plays a part together. Correct, no, no.
But.
That, that's going to be a problem, so we'll get to it in a minute here, but.
Okay.
There are going to be infrastructure that's needed, and it's not just going to be kumbaya, it's going to happen. It's going to be a difficult thing to get there. This was Evergy's power production by percentage in two thousand and twenty-four. Thirty-four percent coal, thirty percent wind, and twenty-six percent natural gas and oil. That's where we are. You can see on the left, in two thousand and five, Evergy was fifty-two percent coal. You can see where they're going. By two thousand and thirty-five, they're still expecting to introduce another additional three hundred and sixty megawatts of production on top of what they have. Just last October, they started construction of two, uh, combined cycle natural gas facilities. There's obviously talk of Jeffrey going down, but again, they are projecting out what's coming off and what they're planning coming in.
What, what is under other non-emitting sources?
So they've signed agreements with Hydro and other power pools, so they're purchasing power elsewhere. There, also within that other non, uh, non-emitting is also something called non-committal, which is basically on-demand. And they're kind of leaving it up in the air to see where the winds of change take them. So yeah, there's, there's, they're leaving themselves some, some room there to navigate the future.
And they're also assuming the sixty-year-old nuclear power plant will run for another fifteen years?
There's a lot of assumptions involved. But basically, the gist of it is, the gist of it is, is that the new energy demands related to EV growth in our region are expected to be modest compared to energies, or Evergy's generation growth. I did want to point out, we're all concerned about EV, um, electricity use. You can see in two thousand and twenty-three, EVs accounted for point five percent of all power produced in the United States. Meanwhile, data centers were at four point four. And you can see to the right with low and high projections, EVs are pulling a lot of power, but it's a third of that. So every time you use a chat GPT query, it's ten times the, the energy used to Google search. So when you're having fun, just remember you're costing us, yourself money in the long run. I said that Evergy said, we're going to be all right in our region. That does not mean that there, it, it's going to be the grid and the infrastructure today. Investments will be required to do this in transmission and distribution. But they pointed out to a number of studies that they agree with, that are done by independent oversight agencies. And I reference these later if anyone has some, wants to see them in detail. But there's three key findings there. Number one, the revenues that are being generated from EV charging are more than paying back the investments that they're putting into the system. And number two, these profits are expected to drive down costs for all electricity customers, not just EV owners. There's a caveat on that as well, and there was a question from a different commission about how is that possible? This is a private organization, any profit will go back to shareholders. It's to do with the fact that they have an oversight, the KCC oversees and fair structures, and the fact that they're, they're basically, again, getting revenue when they used to not get revenue at night from charging. And the third point that these studies point out is that these investments, which are being driven by EVs and data centers, are modernizing and updating the grid, something we all know needs to happen anyway. So the push is there to do something that should be done regardless. Now, I'm going to talk briefly about some recommendations on policy and code that the city, uh, for you to think about. So the first big finding, you know, review and update zoning requirements, okay? We met with staff and community development, there's minimal updates to the MDC that really need to be done. Great. Item two, incorporate EV charging into parking standards. There's places that are, you know, you have, uh, your, instead of one EV space being one parking space, it's equalling two or three. And the idea here is, okay, have the developer put money into getting the, the parking lot ready for EV chargers, or maybe putting it into the chargers instead of putting it into more parking that they may deem they don't even need. Another thing to be thinking about, all new parking lots should probably take into consideration EVs. Most communities are doing ten to forty percent of, of spots being planned for and prepared for EVs. Some communities are doing eighty percent. You know, and this is again, whether or not the EV charger is being put in today, because it's expensive to retrofit things. And so, you know, requiring conduit installation at construction, working with Evergy, you know, looking at local transformers, power line needs, knowing what's going to be entailed in the future is the idea here. It's cheaper to get ready today than to go back and do it later. And then finally, um, adopt accessible electric vehicle, EVs are EV charging standards, and we have those in the report. There are a full set of recommendations for that as well. The third policy recommendation would be to develop standards for specific housing and curbside installations. This one is a little vague, we're still working on this one. I took this photo a year and a half going Aggieville. You can see that is a college kid with a Tesla who's plugging in across the sidewalk into a bar's private outlet. There are several issues there. That's, those are the sorts of things we don't want. There are places that are doing, looking at things of putting chargers in the right-of-way, um, and putting them on streetlights. Kansas City actually had a streetlight electric vehicle charging pilot that we just received the, um, study from, so we're looking that over. So this is kind of, this is kind of a different area. We're all thinking about parking lots, what about right-of-way? It's, it's kind of the Wild West. We're going to stay abreast of that situation. Number four, streamline, streamline permitting and inspection. You know, maybe develop an EV charging specific application or permit. Make it easy for a business if they want to plan a permit. That's something to think about. Incorporating EV policies into long-term planning. There's three points here. So, you know, ensure that EVs are included in all your planning and construction. Don't think this is a flash in the pan. This isn't just going to come and go. The rest of the world is ahead of us, and again, parts of our country are further ahead of us. We don't want to be out there, we, we are not out there leading the way. We want to figure out what other places have done and build off that. And so taking these into account, maybe during planning review for parking lots, uh, buildings, parks, you know, city departments, developers, everyone should be thinking about this as a whole, just a conversation. For buildings, you know, plan, plan space for future electrical panels, if, in your, in your utility room. Require EV, you know, at, making sure you talk to Evergy before you even come to us, these sorts of things. And design and install, again, conduit. This is a big thing, we're going to get to in a second. But for level two for retail and maybe level three for gas stations, how, how do we get ready for this? I wanted to talk about parking garages for a second. Good idea to review parking garage plans, you know, if and when this happens, we want to know what it's going to take to do it. Look at which places should have them inside of the garage. What makes sense with where the transformer, the electrical is, these sorts of things. And have a cost estimate, so if this happens, we have an idea. K-State parking garage received a grant for a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to install some, some chargers that is on hold. We're trying to find out how much of that money was the chargers versus how much of it is retrofitting that garage and the associated utilities. We'd like to see that as a baseline to see what would be, what would be needed, uh, for the city garages. It's recommended to have an EV point person, this could either be within each department or as the city as a whole. And then we're looking to start an EV, uh, technical advisory committee. We'd like to have that person be a part of it. And then the Chamber of Commerce, I was contacted yesterday by Evergy. They are starting a new fleet assessment tool, and they're looking to work with businesses and cities, um, to really take a look at what is this going to cost? Because a lot of cities, and I mean, if you go to Kansas City right now, if you've seen an Amazon vehicle the last two years, they're all electric. It's the maintenance costs, and a lot of cities are starting to go that way too, just maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. And so Evergy's seeing this, and so this is their first attempt to really get out and, and address that. So it's something we think could be a service to the businesses in the region if, if they're interested in doing so, just to take a quick look. More to come on that as well. Multi-unit dwelling, multi-unit dwellings are a bit of an issue. We have a lot of them, a lot of places do, and it's costing a lot of money to retrofit those existing buildings to put in chargers en masse. So again, it's something to be thinking about. And again, these are just, this one here, this commercial and public charging permitting, these are straight out of the plan. I just wanted to show you what the plan looked like in case you want to, uh, take a look. Again, recommendations just within the plan. The other thing I wanted to do is talk about our cost calculators. We all know how to calculate how much money it costs to drive our car. If the trip's a hundred miles and my car gets twenty-five miles a gallon, then I need four gallons of fuel. And at three dollars, it's going to cost me twelve dollars to take the trip. EVs are not that straightforward. So we have these three cost calculators, um, more than happy to actually get online and show you what they look like, but this is just a snippet of it there. And so what you do is you have these, you go through and answer a question or two, and then you have sliders and buttons. And you can see in real life, you know, if gas is two eighty a gallon versus gas at three twenty or gas at two dollars, or if I'm charging all at home, how much is it actually costing me? And we have the same thing for the Kansas City trip, you can put in the same sorts of things. Put in your existing vehicle and then put in your, your electric vehicle of choice. And again, all of this is available on our website. Everything we have is up, up there and available. These are the, the appendices, um, several interesting things in there, and then also the Kansas City one is on there. But I would take questions if there are any. Again, this is, this is not an action plan per se, this was to take a look at where we are. And the number one thing we found is that there's just a need for a lot of education and, and information out in the community.
Before we go to questions, is there any comment from the public on this? Okay, questions for Jared, and may I just say, this, you did an amazing job of this report, it's fantastic.
Oh, well, thank you, it was, it was Olson's. I don't want to take credit for something.
My understanding is the electric cars are a lot heavier than the gas cars?
Yep.
So is there any repercussions from road maintenance, who were just talking about garages for a very long?
Yes.
Time of the evening, what does that mean for?
Yes, is the answer. So it's not as bad as I had feared originally. So a Tesla is still lighter than the average gas truck. And since the last thirty years, we've moved greatly towards SUVs and trucks. You know, there is going to be some weight in there. Studies are showing it's not as bad as, as what they were thinking in terms of where. But another thing we hear a lot, Commissioner, is that, you know, EVs don't pay their way, they're not paying gas tax, okay? So we did some math on that. Currently, if you own an electric vehicle in Kansas, you have a hundred dollar flat fee every year at, for, to register it. So you're already paying your hundred dollars. So you're not paying the gas tax, you're paying that. There's a proposal out called House Bill two oh three that would add a nine cent, uh, per kilowatt hour. At public charging only, and so you can see a simple cost comparison here, you would go from a hundred bucks to a hundred and ninety-one. So you'd go from paying less to paying more. But it is a concern, absolutely. The general concern though is that just the size of vehicles in general, but it is, it is something to take into account.
But you're saying, if someone had like a, a truck or an SUV compared to a car, the difference isn't much. But if you take equivalent vehicle to equivalent vehicle.
Even, even that taken into account, it's not as big of a concern as, as we were originally thinking. But it is a concern, more weight is more weight.
Yeah, because I know we talked about the garages back, we said if it was full of electric cars, it wouldn't be able to.
Yep, yep. It's, on some vehicles, it's multiple hundreds to a few, uh, over a thousand pounds difference. I mean, the new Hummer is nine thousand pounds. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous.
Yes.
It is, it's a lot of weight, it's a lot of weight.
Yeah, and I mean, there, there are days when, you know, we just had the Kansas Livestock Association had their, uh, annual meeting at our, at the conference center, and I'm sure that garage was full of half and three-quarter and one-ton trucks that probably weigh much more than a fleet of Teslas.
But I, I think the concern is if those become.
Electric.
Exactly. Then you're talking another, you know, thirty or fifty percent over again.
But those aren't the light vehicles that we're talking about, right? Or are they?
Uh, trucks do fall into the light vehicle category, pickup trucks do.
Okay, interesting, all right.
Jared, is there information out there on like safety from, um, I'm thinking like fires and those?
Yeah, this is another large concern, and it is a valid concern, so. Met with the fire department, we're going to be tracking that. We've had no electrical fires in the region. Uh, as yet, that's something we're going to be tracking. I know the city of Junction City has purchased one of the EV blankets.
I was gonna say, is there additional equipment involved?
Oh, well, yes.
Like walking past you too?
Yes.
In fight, firefighting and stuff?
Yes, and the amount of water to put it out, if you can, exponentially more. It, it's a lot, it's a problem.
Um, I was curious about the same thing. I actually drive a hybrid. And, um, my logo is blue rather than just silver. And I didn't know if that was a safety flag for fire departments, for example, to be able to know that certain vehicles were electric or were hybrid. Thank you.
I was just going to point out that I'm, I, I think I've read that, uh, gasoline, you know, ICE vehicles burn much more frequently.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There's more of them, but still at the same frequency.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a liquid flammable.
Right.
So yeah, it's. Yeah, I, I, I think the way, the way I think about this whole scenario is this. It's nineteen-ten, and instead of us right now transitioning from horses to vehicles, we're in a slow transition from internal combustion engine vehicles to electric. And it's not going to be a tidal wave, it's not the same everywhere. It's forty percent in San Francisco, it's six percent, seven percent in Kansas City. It's two percent in Manhattan, and it's pretty darn close to zero percent in Womigo or Westmoreland. It is not going to be a tidal wave, it's going to be a slow infiltration. They're expensive. It's experimental, like, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hiccups here, but, you know, a lot of money invested, there's.
And of course, in nineteen-ten, there were people who had electric cars.
Sure, there were, there were.
That just got kind of shouted out. Um, I, uh, I would just say that I think what we should do is position ourselves to be ready to accept all these and know have our, all of our planning and zoning up to date and, and really welcome people that come in. Two groups that, that recently came back from driving rental cars in California that were electric and couldn't be more happy. Uh, Susan and I both drive, um, hybrids and, you know, that to me is, is kind of the best of all possible worlds. I mean, I fill up for gas once a month or something. But, um, it's coming, and we should be ready. And I think we should also consider how we might encourage new, new buildings, new whatever to have the access. Because as you said, it's easier to put it in beforehand than after.
Yeah, there's places that are finding out.
My, um, my son works for Apple, and they have giant, enormous parking lot that's all charging. And you, you just get a little thing on your iPhone that tells you your car's charged to move it.
Yep.
It's, uh, it's coming.
Yeah, and they're, I'm.
You don't have to have a Tesla, you can, they're smaller.
There's, there's more and more coming out all the time, there are. It's still fairly limited in selection, uh, to be honest, there's, there's not that many models out there, but there are more coming. If you're going east-west along the, along I seventy, you're pretty good. It's going to north-south into rural areas where you're, you're really limited. And that's where that range anxiety comes in, like, uh-oh, am I going to make it home? That's, that's the real problem. We talked with a lot of people in Manhattan that own electric vehicles, that do the Kansas City thing a lot. And, and they do love it, but we've also heard from folks that do have issues, so it's. You know, I, for me personally, it would be a great second vehicle if I wanted to spend that much money on a second vehicle. But that would be ideal.
I think too, we shouldn't forget that, um, it could bring people into our town. You know, the people who drive those, and I, I have a friend who drove from, from Vancouver, B.C. down to Wichita to a wedding and got to Idaho and had troubles, but he knew all the stops. And so if people see that they can charge in Manhattan, particularly the three, three level, um, you know, they'll stop. And if they stop and say, uh, someone was at the, um, the new museum, said they were talking to a lady who was so impressed, she was going to stay a couple days. So, you know, getting them into Manhattan is not a, not a silly idea.
Again, I, I think it's really up to you and, and the vision of how far you want to go with this. And, but again, our goal is to, to not jump the gun, to just. And, but again, our goal is to, to not jump the gun, to just provide you with information to maybe some things that we can get ready for should you decide to do it.
Since you're here, I've got another question.
Yeah.
What's the longevity of the car? Because another criticism I've heard is that there's not much resale value once that battery goes and then it's hazard, environmental hazard.
Yeah, so I can talk on the environmental part first. So the studies are showing that, well, I can talk on a few things environmental, but I'll get to that in a second. It's a problem. It's an investment that you're going to be putting back in. It's the equivalent of putting in a new, a new engine or a new transmission or maybe a one and a half of those. It's a lot of money. But 150,000, 100, 150,000 miles is, is what's expected out of those. Most of the warranties are through 100,000 miles. So it's not like it's, you know, nothing. I did want to talk about this, though, about the environmental, the impact. And that's a big concern of ours. Like, at what point is this even payoff for us as a, as a world? If that's something you care about? So in your tank of gas, you have your full tank of gas. Only about 16 to 25% of the power of the energy in that gas actually goes to moving the vehicle. Two-thirds to three-quarters of it is dispersed as heat and noise losses. Whereas an electric vehicle is 87 to 91% of the energy in the battery goes to moving the vehicle. And so studies show that on the top left, that's the, uh, that's the last 25 years of energy production in the United States. And coal is the black. Okay, so we're, we're down here. Imagine if all of a sudden it was all black. So if every vehicle in the United States was all of a sudden electric, but they were all powered by plants that were only coal, you would still see a 30% reduction in CO2 emissions for transportation just because they're that efficient. So now the studies are showing that payback environmentally is as low as 30,000 miles.
Right, but I was more worried about the toxicity of the battery.
The actual battery, yeah, there is recycling, but it's a problem. It, there, I mean, it's going to be a whole new industry. We're still so new in it that it's, it's.
Because I look at it like I've got a 20-year-old car that it cost me, I'd like to paint it, but it isn't worth as much to paint it as it's worth. But it works and the insurance is extremely low.
Yep.
And so those type of cars can still get a lot of utility at 200, 250, 300,000 miles out of them. You're gonna get some maintenance, but.
Yep.
But with your insurance cost and everything else.
It's, it's something that we may look into is, you know, the batteries. It's something we haven't looked into, just on the side anecdotally, we've seen some things. But that's something we'll, we can look to add to the report, so. We're hoping to just add to it continuously as things change and evolve.
Other questions?
I would just like to commend you, Jared, and I know you gave credit to Olson, but your presentations are always very informative, very well organized.
Oh, thanks.
No, I like to second that too, because I think it's a lot of good information that people, you know, wouldn't necessarily have. And I know you're going around doing meetings around town with a lot of different folks and I think that's great.
Well, thank you.
I just have one question, Jared. We keep hearing from Evergy that they can't extend to the new business park or the old business park the kinds of electrical support that we'd like to have out there. So where, you know?
I, I don't have an answer for you on that. But tied on to that, you know, we're talking about recommendations of, hey, if you're interested in my business, changing over my fleet.
Yeah.
And the recommendation is talk to Evergy. Who do you call at Evergy? So that's one of the things we'd like to figure out. Who's the point person locally where we would do that? And I think we may have established that yesterday when they reached out to us. It seems they're kind of charting their own path too in this right now.
Because I think fleet vehicles makes so much sense, you know? I mean, in, in, in Manhattan, driving around.
It's a big investment upfront.
Yeah.
There, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 8:05. Okay, last item on our agenda is an update on Anderson Avenue Reconstruction Project. And we will discuss options for Anderson Avenue, Bellhaven Road, College Avenue intersection improvement. Remember, this is just to provide input and as an informational meeting. Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, interim director of Public Works. With me tonight also is Brian Johnson, city engineer. If you have some specific questions for him after the presentation, I wanted to provide an update on a couple of aspects of the Anderson Avenue project as well as a potential addition to that project. And look, and we are looking for your feedback on that intersect, potential intersection improvement tonight. We wanted to start with just a, an update on the Anderson Reconstruction Project. This was a project that you awarded in December of 2024 to reconstruct Anderson Avenue from Connecticut Avenue to Harris Avenue. It replaces the full street and constructs a new sidewalk on the south side of the street. Of Anderson Avenue replaces water main along that corridor as well as some storm sewer improvements. It also replaces a street and storm, or street and water mains along several of the side streets that run north-south and intersect with Anderson Avenue along that corridor. The project is scheduled to begin construction on June 2nd, 2025. We'll begin with closures on the outside lanes with traffic carried through construction throughout, head-to-head for two weeks on the inside lanes. And then we'll flip traffic to the north for that first phase. So the traffic will run on the northbound lanes while we work on the, on the, the north lanes, while we work on the south lanes through July through the end of the year. And then we'll have multiple phases of work that will continue from the west to the east through the summer of 2027. And so here's a, a project phasing map that shows kind of that first phase in yellow and red in the upper left on the west end through the summer of '25 through the spring of '26. Then the second phase in the blue and the green, they're from about the Unger complex east. And then the third phase, 2026, 2027, in front of Lee School, east to Wickham and, and Harris. And then the, the multiple side streets that you see in gray will be kind of intermingled within those phases as we reconstruct a lot of those side streets and install the necessary utilities along with that on, on the various roads that intersect Anderson Avenue. As I said, we do intend to carry traffic through the project. So there will obviously be some delays perhaps as you move through there. But, but it will be open. Obviously, there will be other routes around town as well along that east-west corridor for LA Boulevard, Kimball's Open, Marlat as well. So multiple other options, but, but we will have traffic move through in this corridor during construction as well. We also intend to, as, as we, as we roll through each phase, we'll engage with neighborhoods, with opportunities to hear about the project. We're contracted with Lighthouse Construction Guidance and they'll, they'll be our kind of PR representative through, through the project to help manage the communication with neighbors and kind of keep them up to speed on what, what's coming next in construction when roads may be closed or when, you know, the work will be changing and impacting residents and working through those, those issues that may come up. We wanted to, as a, as a part of that project, kind of pull up a, a concept that's been around for a while. We started looking at options to reduce accidents along this corridor back in the early 2010s. The corridor, Anderson corridor from Timber Lane to Willard Place, where the last five years has had 41 accidents with eight injuries. And that's, that's a significant, it's more than we would anticipate during any five-year period. This is a map that shows where those intersect, where those accidents are located. So this is Timber Lane, the Unger Complex and Bellhaven and, and Willard is, is here. And so all of the yellow dots are, are accidents during that period. The red ones are, are injury accidents. Brian Johnson said that this looked like a textbook crash map from his engineering days. You, there, all the accidents are right where you would expect them, at those intersections of streets or, or driveways. And so the most cost-effective way to reduce accidents on a corridor like this is to reduce the number of those conflict points. The existing corridor has six driveways or access points, intersections with Anderson. And the, the two options that we're presenting to you tonight would reduce that to two along the corridor, thus increasing safety along the corridor for the, for the motorist. We'd also propose some additional sidewalks as part of these projects, which could help address more pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian safety along the corridor as well. So option A is a new roundabout at the intersection of Bellhaven and Anderson Avenue with an extension of College Avenue. So Bellhaven would get realigned into the, into the roundabout. Anderson would carry through in this direction. And a new extension of College Avenue would come down to tie into that intersection. and a new extension of College Avenue would come down to tie into that intersection. There'd be sidewalks in purple that are shown there. Then those sidewalks would extend north past College Heights and tie into sidewalks along College Avenue to have a continuous sidewalk network from the north into this area. And then the purple sidewalks along the south side of Anderson tying into the sidewalks that are already proposed with the project. The second option is a stoplight signalized intersection. Again, similar realignment of Bellhaven, extension of College Avenue, four-way stoplight here, additional lanes, as well as the same sidewalk configurations that we had with the roundabout scenario.
Wyatt, what's the green up at the top?
The green represents the closure of College Heights Road at that intersection. So that street would be closed, driveways along the corridor would be closed. Timber Lane would need to be evaluated, but could potentially be closed or some other configuration to restrict in-and-out access as a possibility. Bellhaven obviously gets realigned and College gets realigned.
So would the entrance to this, I don't want to call it a strip mall, but this collection of commercial on the, what's it, I guess, northeast?
This office.
How would that get accessed?
That's one of the things we would still need to evaluate during final design, whether or not they would maintain access off of Anderson or potentially gain access off of College. I mean, those are some details that would still need to be worked out.
Yeah, and I mean, I can see that being left open since it is so close to the intersection. Hopefully, folks would be slowing down, and, you know, so that would kind of reduce that conflict a little bit there.
Yeah, these are concepts, you know, if we choose to move forward with one of these options, there is some further design review and engineering that would need to be done. You know, maybe the whole roundabout slides 20 feet to get a little extra distance, you know, to make room for existing entrances or reconfiguration of those entrances. Those are some of the things that would be worked out through that design process.
Yeah, and the same thing, I guess there's that house right there, basically right on the corner of Bellhaven and Anderson. I see that there's kind of some access road necessary for the roundabout down there at the bottom to get to that. Is that really just for access?
There's some driveway reconfiguration there, I think that's shown. There's a connection there with Willard, which is this street right here. So yes, this is a pinch point and something that would be a challenge to work through. But again, that's what that design process is for, is to find the best solution for that, for maintain access for those residents.
Wyatt, who owns the land that would be implicated in the College Avenue extension?
This is a church property here, and then this is the Unger Complex. Those are the primary properties that would be impacted by acquisition. So why are we talking about this now? Obviously, we are aware of potential redevelopment at the Unger Complex. We think there's opportunity for the necessary right-of-way acquisition as a part of that transition from Case State to a new owner and a redevelopment and a repurposing of that site. And so we think that we could, like, that redevelopment kind of spurs moving this discussion forward. There's also the existing project along Anderson. We have a contractor, they'll be mobilized, we have unit costs, we have a funding strategy for that project. We could easily modify the existing Anderson project to add the roundabout. Or the intersection, we're already paying for the through lanes. We're already paying for curb and gutter, we're already paying for sidewalk, we're paying for street replacement on Bellhaven. We're paying for street replacement on some of the other side streets and intersection improvements already. All of those costs would carry forward. And so the additional work that needs to be done to make the roundabout, you know, isn't as significant as if it were a greenfield project, you know, if we didn't have the Anderson project already there. If we don't do anything at this time, you know, the opportunity may be lost for quite a while. There's, you know, that pavement that we're putting down with the Anderson project, you know, last 25 years before it would need rehabilitation. And so it may not make financial sense to go tear that up and add different, you know, lane configurations or roundabout or signals in the future. So we felt like now is the opportune time to have this discussion, determine if this is an improvement we'd like to explore further or pursue, given the alignment of the redevelopment and the other project. Speaking with our engineering team as well, on staff, as well as with our consultant, we would recommend the roundabout option. Feel like it has the positive effect on traffic calming, as well as allowing through Anderson traffic to flow freely through the intersection, but gives that pause point as you move through the circle to help slow speeds through the corridor. Also reduces conflicts and severity of the accidents that, you know, that would be a potential at any intersection. Obviously, if we move forward, we would need to evaluate those existing driveways, pedestrian crossings, what exactly property would need to be acquired through right-of-way acquisition. All that would be part of next steps through a final design process. So those next steps, you know, could be to proceed with design of a roundabout or the signalized intersection pending your feedback tonight. We could bring back a design contract for your consideration to move from concepts into final design. During that process, we would host neighborhood meetings and engage with the neighborhood to find out, you know, what concerns or issues that they may be having, either with, you know, existing traffic concerns or future traffic concerns, and how we could best address those with the project. We'd identify exactly what property would need to be acquired for right-of-way, and then we could return to you this fall with updated cost estimates, results of the public engagement, you know, a detailed strategy to how we would construct this with the Anderson project, and ultimately, a change order to that project if we decided to move forward with the additional construction. So happy to have a discussion and hear your questions about the upcoming Anderson Avenue project itself, as well as any feedback on either scenario. And ultimately, would like some direction on whether we move forward with that design of a roundabout or a signal and return to you with the subsequent contracts to execute that design.
Following the presentation, we usually have public comment. So we'll go ahead with that, and I'm sure we have many questions to ask too. So if there's anyone who'd like to speak on this issue from the public? Randy is, that's all right. She's signed up, but go ahead.
Okay, please, 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 please.
Quick question for us.
I want to thank all of you really for your duties. I appreciate that as being in Manhattan for over 60 years. And I appreciate this. So I'm going to project my voice. Okay, I am against the roundabout, and I'll tell you why. Okay, I was in a car accident on the roundabout on Blumont. And this is a picture of it. So I don't know how you want to pass that around because I don't have a projection. Okay, thank you. Now, while on Blumont, has a vision problem. And if you are in a car, I was right by McDonald's facing south. It takes seven seconds to get to Blumont. Okay, and it was busy time of the evening, it was 5 o'clock. So I was very cautious. I stopped. But the roundabout there has all yield signs. Yield signs, so that means that you don't have to stop. Whatever entrance you go, you can just go, 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 go. There was a slowdown of traffic because of the light that was out on Tuttle Creek Boulevard. Okay, so I had looked, because there's a lot of traffic, I was already stopped. I looked right, and I looked left, and I went right because of the traffic lock. Stopping the traffic for just a little bit. I turned out onto the outside lane because I was going to pass Blumont, go around to the other side, and go south onto Tuttle Creek Boulevard. Okay, so what happened was another car, I don't know where she was coming from. She, I think, because it was clear. And when she stopped by Walgreens, or she didn't stop by Walgreens because I didn't see her. She was going around the inside lane, and here I was coming on the outside lane, leaving McDonald's, okay, to go around this other way. She hit me, or we hit each other. And luckily, nobody was hurt. That's the blessing. But the problem was that she must have been going faster than 15 miles an hour. This is my guess. I am not a traffic person. There was no policeman that was watching. Okay, so I was going around the outside lane to go on past that. But I didn't even make it to there because it's only seven seconds. I timed it. And so she was going probably from one of the other entrances and was going faster than 15 miles an hour, and we hit because she was turning from the inside to go to Blumont. So I didn't know what to do. I should have just left my car right where it was when we hit. But she went ahead of me. She passed me by. Am I finished already?
Yes, you're finished. Thank you. I think you've.
Okay, but I am totally opposed. Let's have a traffic light.
Can you just say your name and address?
Oh, Rondie Dale, spelled like Randy, 2416 Rogers Boulevard, and Manhattan, Kansas.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you have any questions, I'm against the roundabout. I am for the red traffic.
I'm going to keep this sign in sheet.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
I can put a sign sheet over here at my station.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's a great idea. Okay, next, please.
Kirk Crabtree, 514 Pillsbury, here on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flint Hills. About two months ago, I was sent a message through another organization about the neighborhood around the Unger Complex that were concerned about the traffic and concerned about the development that was going on there. And then we kind of shifted that to a Habitat project. The reason I'm speaking is because of Ms. Sandra, Ms. Linda, and the neighborhood's involvement that started around the Unger Complex. But of course, now we're talking about Anderson as well. This neighborhood is to be commended. It is tough sometimes to get people to get together around a project. I know a lot of times they come up here to you all when they feel there's a problem, such as a roundabout. But that is what Habitat really strives for, is we want neighborhoods to communicate with each other and to be able to communicate with the developers. The developer actually for the Unger project has been very open with their public meetings. They're the ones that actually reminded all of us about this meeting tonight. So they're to be committed for that. But in the end, this neighborhood around Unger, and of course, Ms. Linda and her properties there on the east side of Anderson, they really want their voices heard, and we want to make sure that y'all hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign in, please, over there. Anybody else from the, please come ahead.
I'm Sandra Visser, and my husband Gordon, and we live on Lookout Drive. And our concern is that those 41 accidents are my neighbors. There's 62 houses that wrap around Unger Complex. You don't use Timber Lane unless you would be willing to put a blindfold on and drive out onto Anderson. So everybody's using Bellhaven. And it's really difficult to get out. But the thing that's not been mentioned is that on Thursday night, there will be a rezoning, well, discussion here to put 108 apartments in the Unger Complex. 108. Does that not lend itself to a traffic light rather than a roundabout? Say you have two cars for every apartment. I don't know. I don't know. There is no more dangerous section of Anderson Hall, I mean Anderson Avenue, I always say that. Too many years at Case State. There is no more dangerous piece that you could find. The project is beautiful. I'm not against the project. But we've got to have a really good solution to get those 108 apartment dwellers out and to get our neighbors out. And a roundabout terrifies me. And I also have a question, why we're bringing College Avenue into this place that's already horribly horrible? I don't understand. People are going to drop off Kimball, they come up College Avenue, and now they're going to be dumped out right where we have a problem. I don't know whose idea that was, but it's a bad idea. I would hope somebody might rethink that.
Thank you. Would you like to go sign in?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Other comments? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joe Myers. I own the property that's, I guess, the northwest corner of, I guess, College Heights and College Avenue. Our families lived there for 60 years. And seeing this new road coming in and coming through the neighborhood and wondering how many cars are going to be coming through a neighborhood through there. And I guess, right now, it's a huge problem with traffic and speed already. I tried to get the statistics from the police about how many tickets they've written there. I mean, I couldn't get an answer from them, but tremendous amount. You can hear them about every night pulling people over. But, you know, bringing more people down that corridor and putting more people out onto Anderson right there just seems like a big mistake. Also curious if they do go through with it. Are they leaving the four-way stop in? Or are they going to end up having, you know, a quarter-mile drag strip from there up to the medical center? Sidewalks going in. We've got kind of a vegetation buffer from the highway or from the roadway right now. It'd probably disappear with this project, and that'd be detrimental. Anyway, my thoughts are, is keep it out of there if you can, please.
Could you give me your street address, please?
Pardon?
Your street address, please.
It's 1001 College Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Would you like to sign in? Come forward.
My name is Carol Baldwin, and I live at 755 College Heights Circle. My property would be directly affected by the proposed College Avenue extension as it would be located just adjacent to my backyard. The placement of the road in this location would be devastating for me and destructive to the neighborhood. It would likely impact not only the value of my house, but drastically decrease my quality of life living in Manhattan. The Public Works summary for this meeting listed reduced accidents and driver confusion as the concerns needing mitigation. I suggest that a roundabout would increase driver confusion based on the Blumont 4th Street Roundabout experience. The reasons for accidents around this area is not directly due to too many access points, but because the curves in Anderson Road do not allow drivers to see very far ahead when approaching this stretch of road. At the Town Hall meetings this past winter relating to the Unger redevelopment, traffic on Anderson came up for extensive discussion. The consensus among those who were attending was that a stoplight at the intersection of College Heights and Anderson with added turn lanes would achieve the desired outcome of reducing accidents and handling the additional traffic generated by the redevelopment. This option is not even being discussed by Public Works. Did Public Works attend the meetings, and did they listen to residents' concerns and solutions? Why have they proposed a plan diametrically opposed to the wishes of the residents instead of following up on a solution that is feasible, addresses the concern, is less intrusive to the neighborhood, enjoys resident support, and is likely much less expensive? Such a desirable solution would be in the best interests of the city of Manhattan and its residents. My hope is that this meeting is a serious inquiry by the city commissioners into public opinion and consideration of alternative options. Thank you.
Thank you. Please go sign in. Other comments?
My name is Chris Deitchen. I'm at twenty-three fifteen Indian Mountain Lane. It's behind the Unger building. It's gonna be affected with, you know, after the meeting that they have in, in another couple of days. But also, the traffic is, is there a problem. I have lived there for over fifty years, and my neighbors lived over there in the same spot for over sixty. And, you know, I really think that sometimes, you know, we pay taxes and stuff all, all these years, and then it seems like, boy, all of a sudden, our, our, our lives can be changed by somebody else's ideas. And I agree with her a hundred percent, and especially on the, on the College Avenue coming down there. What's gonna happen when the K-State game's in there? What's, what's gonna be the quickest way to Aggieville, down College Avenue and hit Anderson? Well, all of a sudden, now we got more traffic on our street that we already had problems with. And so I really feel that there's, needs to be more thought goes in this. It is a dangerous deal, but the, the only problem with the stoplight on Timber Lane and College Heights is, is there is a little angle. I mean, the grade would cause a little bit of problems on, on when it's slick, but we don't really have all that many days of slick. Just, and if the city knew that was a potential problem, we could make sure it got gravelled really good and, and sanded good or chemical treated. And, but you're talking about old neighborhoods that have had, a lot of the families have been there for a long time, and, and some of the families has even had their, 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 living in mom and dad's old house and, and because they wanted to keep it, because our neighborhood is really a quiet-type neighborhood, you know? And, and bringing in more traffic into Anderson just doesn't make a sense. And, and, and we need to really know what we need to do on redeveloping, because you stick that Unger building in, and it's really a hundred and ten units, or at least that's what I've been told. And, and, and which converts about two hundred, over two hundred people. And our little area has only got a hundred and fifty. So all of a sudden, on the corner of our area, it's gonna be, you know, a whole bunch of people. And those people are gonna add to that traffic problem that we already have. You know, I don't like speed limits to be slow either, but you know, if we made the speed limit twenty mile or twenty-five mile an hour through there and enforced it, there probably wouldn't be as many accidents. So I don't know whether I covered everything or not, but.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, and I do know that you guys all got a hard job to do. But it's really bad when they disrupt neighborhoods that's been around for a while.
Please go sign in. Other comments, please?
Good evening. My name is Natasha, Natasha Roschkowska. I live at twenty-sixty-three College Heights Road. So the extension of College Avenue, I'm against the extension of College Avenue.
Excuse me, can you just, one side or the other, to be closer to the mic?
Yeah. I'm, I oppose the extension of College Avenue, and, because this extension will benefit only the developer of new residential complex. It was never requested by commuters who use Anderson to go to work and by local residents. And instead of one busy road, there will be several, creating more chaotic traffic and lowering the area residential quality. There are also quite a number of negative concerns, negative comments on social media about interruption of fluidity of the traffic in this place. And the proposal also claims that the main problem that will be solved is the safety concern. But even the number which is given to us, forty-one accidents here, is a little bit meaningless without context, because it doesn't, there is no information how this location ranks in safety compared to other parts of Manhattan. Are these accidents all related to access to the indicated streets? And were there other factors involved? And also, the number itself, if we look at the Kansas Department of Transportation crash fact book, over the five years, not including twenty-twenty-four, because the data is not yet released. The total crashes in Manhattan are eight hundred thirteen in twenty-twenty-three, eight hundred fifty-one in twenty-twenty-two, eight hundred thirty-seven in twenty-twenty-one, seven hundred eighty-six in twenty-twenty, and one thousand fifty-six in twenty-nineteen. So that's total four thousand three hundred forty-three crashes, not incidents. So the argument of spending money of the city on this project, which is not well-developed and not well-present as a safety measure, is unconvincing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
Hi, John Ball, thirty-one oh seven Harrah Hay Ridge. I'm here as the chief of Building and Grounds for College Heights Baptist Church. I'm gonna speak to the, the, the use of, of our property a little bit. But I did want to clarify for the city staff and for the commissioners, the way our College Heights is organized, there's only one authorized person that can speak toward real estate and business operations. That happens to be me. So anybody else that they talk to, they're, they may be getting an opinion, but they are not legally authorized to talk about building and grounds and real estate. That's kinda, that's kinda my job.
Okay.
And I represent the church. So I would point out that the loss of the property, which is about two-thirds of our parking space, and this is all just information, because we hadn't got the design, we don't know specifics. But looking at kind of the overlay, that's two-thirds of our parking on the east side. The loss of that parking could be replaced over on the south side, but that takes out all our green space, and we use that space for picnics and other, other events. The challenge is that we have, and we provided the concept designs to the city staff showing that we have future expansion. The loss of this property would prevent us from doing future expansion. We would be landlocked into the, the property. That's how, that's how important it is. In fact, when we had the concept designs done, it was based on the restriction of the po-, the property and the easements and other stuff. Where could we put an expanded sanctuary and do some other things? So any loss of property along that side would prevent us from either doing any fu-, future expansions but in order to have sufficient parking space. So you just need to be aware of that. There are also other multiple negative impacts that I won't cover at this time. Have no objection to the design going forward, but I just want to be sure the commissions were tracking that, you know, we don't have an offer, but if we get an offer on the table, don't be surprised if the church turns down that offer. Okay? The church council met on Sunday, and we talked about this, and there was not a member on the church council that was interested in selling any property. And then if you, if the city wants to pursue it through eminent domain, that can get real expensive for everybody. So we really appreciate you addressing Anderson traffic, and it's good to see everybody tonight. But this, this is a pretty radical solution to the traffic issue.
Go sign in.
All right.
Please.
I'm Sarah Silva, and I live at twenty-two ten College Heights Road. I also own with my brother one thousand one College Avenue, which was my parents' home. So I've lived there all my life and have been witness to the speeding that goes along Anders-, or College Avenue currently. And I just have a lot of questions about why you'd want to tie College Avenue into Anderson, and what are you gonna do about the speeding that occurs? Like my brother said, is it just gonna be a drag strip? Sorry.
That's okay.
Straight down to the medical center, because it kind of already is. How would I get, if I want to go over College Heights, is there gonna be a stop sign there? Is access not gonna be allowed to go east over College Heights? Just a lot of things thinking about also, kind of questioning why you'd want to build all this housing right in the middle of single-family-owned homes. This neighborhood, my neighborhood and across behind Unger has been established for so many years. I'd say ninety-five percent of the homes there are owner-occupied. And then you're gonna bring in another, what, said a hundred-some units? So double that amount of people in. So you're basically gonna, there'll be more people in that area than there are, or in that unit than is going to be living behind it currently. Also, when I worked at K-State, I worked in Unger. I cannot believe you're gonna put people in that building. That it is so old and decrepit, and it smells, and it's horrible. So I would really think about those things, too.
Thank you. Any other?
Amber Starling, four zero eight Houston Street. To summarize, the city is experiencing ongoing financial hardship, and the roundabout seems to be more expensive. It's more disruptive to traffic during construction, more disruptive to residents, requires severe disruption of College Heights Baptist Church, requires tearing up pavement with decades left in its lifespan. And roundabouts in general are quite unpopular with the public present and on every Facebook group in town. These are some fairly compelling arguments in favor of the traffic light, but I have not heard any compelling rhetoric for the roundabout. I hope that the commission could ask the presenter to give us a little bit more clarity on that. Thank you.
Amber.
And, sign in.
Amber, one point, I don't think that the presentation was indicating that current pavement would, that pavement would be.
Yeah, the, the presentation was saying if we do this.
If we do nothing.
If we do Anderson and then decide later to go in, we'd be, like, the pavement's due to be replaced now, but if we wait and go in, it's due now. If we wait and go in, it would be another twenty-five year, like, we would, we would need to wait twenty-five years or we're re-replacing things that we've already done. But it's an important clarification, because it was a little confusing.
Okay.
Thank you for your interpretation of my.
Am I seeing no other people interested in? Thank you. Thank you for your input.
And, and can I ask one more? I just had one question that I didn't tell, he told about the, the accidents on Anderson, but I see accidents at every cer-, roundabout, and, and they didn't give the report on how many accidents is, happens in our roundabouts we have in Manhattan, Kansas. That'd be good information to have.
Okay, thank you. That's okay. Okay. Wyatt, do you want questions?
I guess I'll go. Wyatt, did we look at traffic study for what adding College Avenue connection would do? Or what the anticipation is?
I'll ask Brian to come up and talk.
Brian, did we? No. So, I mean, that would be something that I assume if we advised to go forward, part of that study would, would be looking at anticipated traffic?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. We haven't done any analysis on what that extra traffic would bring over what already goes down College Heights. There's already a number there that's associated with so much volume. We haven't done that analysis to see what that looks like. That's, that's part of this, what this design would do. We'd go in there and look at level of service. We also have a traffic impact study that's coming from the Unger project, so we'll be able to get some counts from that also.
Good. So, I mean, and tonight is really just setting you guys up to be able to do all of those.
To answer all of these great questions that we got, yeah.
Because I, I do think there's some great questions just regarding the, that traffic and coming down. Because to go through the, I think, the money of putting that connection in, it would make sense that it's utilized, but then I think there's a valid question on why bring more traffic in. I would be interested in, my assumption is that the roundabout would be more expensive, but I'm speculating on that. Traffic lights are expensive. Brian, I'm putting you on the spot. Tell me which one's more expensive and how much it costs.
In this scenario, I think the roundabout would be slightly cheaper, because we're already paying for those four lanes of Anderson going through the roundabout, so you only have to add the bulbs.
Okay.
Whereas the traffic signal, you have to add the mast arms and the poles.
Yep.
Mast arms and poles are probably seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Could I just point out that, that we had thought about putting a roundabout by Meadowlark on Kimball there in North Manhattan. Sadly, it was kind of a new idea, and the public was very much against it. It would have saved us a million dollars. And there have been two traffic fatalities at that light since we built it. And the problem with lights and safety is that people want to beat the light. And, you know, they see the yellow going, and then they go a little faster. Particularly on that hill coming up, you, in icy situation, you don't want to try and start again after you stop. So people.
Yeah.
Run the light. And we've heard from the, the RCPD how many. The other thing that's important, and Rondi, I'm sorry you had an, an accident, but it probably would have been worse at a traffic light, because at a traffic light, you have thirty-four points of possible.
Bingo.
And in a roundabout, you have six. And so roundabout accidents do happen, but they're usually much, much safer and much.
Less severe impacts.
Yeah.
Because people speed up when they see a yellow.
And I, I don't want to sound like a roundabout salesman, but I was sort of not sure about roundabouts, too, because I think the first thing we did was build the one on Kimball.
Kimball, in Grandview.
And we didn't build it very well.
That's bad.
It's good now.
Yes, to say the least. And so it's got kind of a bad rep in town. But if you talked to, I went over and spent an afternoon with the civil engineers over and looked at all kinds of roundabouts, all kinds of places. And especially in Florida, where many, many people are elderly, and you would think maybe they'd have a little trouble coming from Iowa or Idaho to Florida. And the traffic flows, Vale, Colorado, had, had traffic backing up literally five miles on the interstate, put in two roundabouts at the turnoff, and it went away. So I, I, you know, I, I think we should just keep our minds open about whatever possibilities. But we do have to figure this Unger complex is coming. We will try, need to get people in and out. When I come down College Avenue and get on College Heights and turn onto Anderson there, that's a really deadly place to turn onto anything.
Sight distance there is bad. In fact, one gentleman even mentioned sight distance is very bad there. It's hard to see left and right. It's not a great alignment.
So i- is that why, because I'm, I'm kind of curious why that intersection wasn't identified for this major inter-, this, this, whatever kind of traffic control that we put in here? Was that part, was that considered? And, and if so, why, why are we going with this location?
With the Anderson project? Is that the question?
No, so with, with this, you know, either the roundabout or the light, could we move it? could we move it west on Anderson to that Timber Lane Drive intersection?
If you move it, you can. If you move it west to Timber Lane, you have what the gentleman talked about with the poor sight distance, the poor
Mm-hmm.
sight lines each way and you're on a hill and you're on a curve.
Okay.
So that generates issues. It also doesn't solve the Bell Haven issue. Right? Bell Haven is still there. There's still accidents in Bell Haven. So the what we're trying to achieve here is taking two intersections and making one.
Okay.
My final comment was gonna be the pedestrian access on the roundabout
Yeah.
makes makes me nervous.
Does me, too.
I'm just, that part is like, oof, that I I don't like that part, but
Probably, and I I don't wanna speak too far down design, but you're gonna end up with some sort of a hawk signal, rapid flash or something at that intersection similar to Kimball and scenic, Kimball and Anderson.
But you know, you you do just have to get to the middle place and stand
You got an island refuge.
Yeah, I mean
Yeah, I think that one's just not as utilized for it.
It's safer than going across Anderson, you know.
I I think we do need to give some real attention to this. I'm familiar with a family that lives on the west side of what we're proposing
Okay.
where kids walked to school
Uh-huh.
um to go to
To Lee.
to Lee School.
Mm-hmm.
And so the thought about having kids crossing that intersection is something we have to be really careful about.
And that is, without a doubt, that's one of the downfalls of roundabouts. And that's what we would look at in the line. How many pedestrians do we have crossing? How many people are gonna use it? Is the traffic signal more efficient? All of those questions that we debate every time when we look at a new intersection.
So when you guys are looking for direction tonight, are you looking for us to say, please pursue this one avenue or just pursue the avenues and and come back? Maybe that's a Danielle question?
Yeah, I think this evening we're looking for direction on if you would like us to pursue intersection improvements. And then, of course, we can continue um study and design of these various options that we have. Um I also think there was a third design that was talked about um that the developer had presented and we will certainly track that down as well. Um if you all give us direction to pursue intersection improvements.
I I would say, I know we only have eight minutes or we have to make a
We can
motion if we need to, but I mean, I I'm in favor of researching intersection improvements and looking at those options. I I couldn't tell you which I like or any of that, but interested in you guys reviewing that.
I concur.
Yeah, I do as well. I've done them with Karen on the roundabout. I personally don't like them that much, but I think to slow down the traffic, knowing you're gonna have to slow down, you have no option. Even if it's not yellow, if it's green, you're going because I wanna make the green.
Yeah.
Where with that roundabout, you have to slow down.
It's a it's a traffic home.
Yeah.
And when the pavement's new and fresh, your speeds are gonna go up.
Yeah, it's really easy to speed down that section of Anderson.
It is.
Um I am generally pro roundabout. Um I know that there is some some discomfort just because they're different. Um but I have seen a lot of evidence to lead me to believe that they do help at least reduce conflict. You're you're always going to have traffic conflict no matter what. Um and that it it can help reduce that. I originally was all for the College Avenue extension, but then I I really started, you know, got to thinking about it and looking at it on the map here. Um and it it does really kinda concern me that we would ha- I I know it goes from from four lanes to two at Claflin, um but having that straight to Anderson, I would probably take that route more often than I would going down Claflin to Sunset. Um and I imagine a lot of people would as well, and so that would cause a lot of disruption in that neighborhood, especially given that it's just a a two-lane neighborhood road, so that's something that I'd really want us to look at. And yeah, really just would like to see a cost comparison, including long-term maintenance, because I know those traffic signals require a lot of regular um electrical maintenance on top of the, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars just to put it in. Um and and kind of a safety comparison, just kind of more information in general on roundabouts versus traffic signals. Um and and really, I think this is gonna require a lot of conversation with the community. I really appreciate the neighborhood for showing up.
I wanted the, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, I was just going to say, I I I was struck when someone mentioned, you know, I actually do use that route quite often. Um but realizing what's at the other end of College Avenue, which is a honking big football stadium, uh really made that a little bit more tangible to me about the potential, the potential for a very, very large increase in traffic, at least, you know, some days of the year.
So I think to wrap things up, the final comment that I would make just for the commissioners as well is that as we start to look at this intersection improvement and design, we will also be committed to neighborhood meetings and working with the neighborhood on this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Can I motion for adjournment?
I move that
Do we have a city manager briefing?
Danielle, you have a city manager briefing.
Um I do, but I left it on my desk. I just realized that.
Be very brief.
No, I I'll send you guys an email.
Okay, great.
Hey, can I make, hold on, can I make one quick suggestion?
Yeah.
Um at our city-county county meetings, I'm really thinking that that's an appropriate time for Danielle to or and if Rich wants to give an update from the county, I know Danielle, you've been going to the county commission meetings every month. My comfort would be we're all receiving that same information and digesting that together. So I I would personally like you to start giving that updated at that meeting versus the county commission meeting. I don't know how the fellow commissioners feel about that.
Um I agree and I think it would be a much more opportune time for us to be able to incorporate or to understand county feedback.
Ag- agree.
Just today, in today's paper, well, a paper that came today, whether it was today's or not, there was something about the county putting um new recommendations about Airbnb's.
Yeah.
And you know, that's the kind of thing that I think we could have a robust discussion around at these city-county meetings. So I I echo what Jamie just said. And I will make a motion to conclude the April eighth meeting of the Manhattan City Commission.
Second. Aw, you'd be me.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Monna?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McColl?
Yeah.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion passes.